Oh, not yet. Oh, sorry. Never mind.[93.88][93.88](Laughter) Now it's okay. Okay. The September 26, 2024 Des Moines City Council meeting is now called to order. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz will now lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dave. All right. Let the record show that all council members are present. I would like to welcome you here tonight, all of you that are here in person, and there are probably people watching online. And what I did want to let you know is that we will not be on our cell phones up here at the dais during this meeting, or really any meeting. So if you do have problems, this is mostly for people watching online. If you have problems either hearing or seeing the meeting, please contact cityclerk@desmoineslaw.gov with the problems so that we can work to fix them, because I'm not going to be checking my phone. We're not checking our phones during meetings. So just as a courtesy, cityclerk@desmoineslaw.gov. Okay. It's now time for comments from the public. So tonight, we also have a public hearing, a little bit later in the meeting, probably maybe about an hour in or so. If you have comments relating to the subject of the public hearing, which is the sale of tract C, okay? If you, please hold those comments until that time so that your comments can be on record for the purpose of the hearing. If you do not wish to stay for the public hearing, you're free to speak now, but your comments won't be on record for the hearing, okay? So if you are, if you are speaking now, please keep your comments respectful. Speaking or acting in a disruptive manner will be an invitation to be removed from the meeting. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and city of residence now. Here's a problem that we have. We did have a place to sign up to speak in regard to the public hearing, which is tract C. And nobody signed up on that page. And so, but I'm thinking that of all of these people, some of you do want to speak about tract C. And so you won't, I'm going to ask, well, I'm not going to allow people to speak both times. There's a lot of people here. So if you're here to speak on tract C, that's later. So I'm trying to decide what to do here. Okay, you'll, you'll have three minutes. Everybody gets three minutes. We have, we'll have enough time. I'm going to call your name. If you're going to speak later, just say you're going to speak later, and I'll mark you for that, okay? And that's okay with the, this, all right. So I'm going to just go down the line. First step, Dave Kaplan.
Mayor Buxton, councilmembers, outgoing city manager, Dave Kaplan with the Port of Seattle. And here, just to remind you that last Friday, you should have received an email from me. Usually I send them out five days in advance of a commission meeting titled "Commission Agenda and Other Notables." And one of the notables on last Friday's email was our announcement that the Sustainable Airport Master Plan: Near-Term Projects Draft National Environmental Policy Act/Environmental Assessment will be published on October 21st. That'll be the first day of public comment. The NEPA EA evaluates potential impacts of those projects and provides an opportunity for the public to provide input. There is going to be a commission meeting on October 22nd. The commission will be briefed. Encourage everybody to watch the commission meeting, or it'll be held at the SEA Conference Center, so either in person or online. In addition, there are going to be three public meetings scheduled: November 13th, November 14th, and November 16th. And I assure you, the one on the 14th will not be in Des Moines. I know you have a council meeting that night, so, but there will be one here in Des Moines. Again, public comments will be open beginning October 21st through December 5th. And the comments can be made at one of the public meetings by email or the SAM NTP website beginning October 21st. If anyone sends anything in advance of that, it won't be on the public record, because the document won't have been published yet. So if you have any questions regarding the process or information regarding that, please don't hesitate to contact me. So, thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Next, Brian Davis.
Good evening, mayor, council. Good to see everybody. Thanks for the time. My name's Brian Davis. I'm vice chair of the Burien Airport Committee. And I'm here to make sure that you're all aware that Burien City Council recently adopted a position against Initiative 2117, which would repeal the state's Climate Commitment Act. Burien believes repeal would be harmful to our city and dangerous to the financial health of communities throughout Washington State. To date, the Climate Commitment Act has raised some $2 billion for programs to offset the damage caused by greenhouse gases, and there has been great demand for that funding. You'll recall that last legislative session, our state senator Karen Kaiser and district representative Tina Orwall sponsored a bill aimed at repairing and replacing so-called port packages, which were installed to provide some noise mitigation in homes beneath the flight paths to Seattle Tacoma International Airport. Here in Des Moines, you're especially aware that over a period of decades, many of those packages have failed. I'm sure that you too have been hearing for years from residents of those homes, many of whom simply don't have the means to fund the repairs themselves. The Kaiser-Orwall bill initially allocated $10 million in Climate Commitment Act funds, but before it reached the governor's desk, the funding was virtually stripped completely out of the bill for fear that Initiative 2117 might pass. If that happens, there will be no state money for projects like this in the foreseeable future. The Port of Seattle has set up a pilot port package replacement program, but will start with just 30 homes. That's out of about 9,000 properties that were originally outfitted with port packages. This program will only allow repairs under a very narrow set of parameters that will leave many affected homeowners without relief. These neighbors deserve better. We certainly understand how important Sea-Tac Airport is, not here, not only here locally, but to the economy of the entire Puget Sound region and beyond. We also believe the people who live beneath the flight path deserve some compensation because we're building the airport's growth on their backs. Initiative 2117 is a misguided attempt to starve local governments of resources they need to serve their communities. As this city's elected representatives, you know all too well, I think, about the handcuffs that were imposed by a previous initiative that limits increases in your property tax levy to just 1% a year. That is unsustainable. Funding from sources like the Climate Commitment Act could offset the shortfalls that result. And our fear is that if 2117 passes, it'll be years before anybody finds the new resources on the scale it would take to fix all of these port packages. Our goal in Burien is to secure funds for programs that deliver tangible benefits to our residents. A no vote, I think, on Initiative 2117 is absolutely essential to making that happen. We'd be grateful to see the city of Des Moines join Burien in the fight to save this critical path for funding that would benefit hundreds, if not thousands, of our residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Barbara McMichael. Barbara, did you want to talk about tract C, or did you want to comment now? Because if you do, do track, want tract C, then it's not going to be on record, right?
I understand, right.
Okay, gotcha.
I think I have more general kind of thing.
Okay.
Des Moines Creek Business Park, so.
Great.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name's Barbara McMichael, resident of Des Moines. I submitted an email to you already, and probably you've had a chance to look at it. On the other hand, I think you've probably got a lot of emails, so I just wanted to point out a few pertinent points of my particular email. First of all, I mentioned the Department of Health's map of environmental health disparities. And I'm sure you're already aware of it, but I'm just saying it for everybody's benefit. Many of us who live in Des Moines are in Zone 10, which is the worst environmental impacts on our citizens of anywhere in the state. And Mount Rainier High School is within Zone 10. Pacific Middle School is within Zone 10. Midway Elementary is within Zone 10. Trees are an important mitigation for some of this. So the idea of taking away trees, even though they would be replaced, it would be years to mitigate for that. The ideas of taking away the trees that are in the proposed Des Moines Creek Business Park West parcel is very painful to me. That would be about 500 trees, okay? Number two, I included a link to the article in the spring issue this year of Currents. On page eight, it has the information about our top priority. The article stressed how more people than ever had, had responded to this survey for the comp plan. And our top priority, believe it or not, was not even public safety, which is very important to all of us. It was preservation of natural spaces. So tonight and going forward, you have an opportunity to put that as a priority. You are hearing, you have been hearing from citizens for the last year, I know, about this important issue to us. Number three, I heard many of you speak at the last meeting about how Catherine Caffrey is an expert negotiator. And I just think going forward, we should take advantage of her expertise before there is any sale conducted. I think it might be a good idea to talk with her, talk about the issues of our city, and use her expert, tough negotiating skills to get what we really need out of any sale. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Olivia Bronson. On tract C, okay. Okay, thank you, Olivia. Steve Olson? Quinn, oh, sorry. Great handwriting. So Steve, did you want to, tract C or general comment? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Buxton and members of city council. My name is Steve Quinn, and I live in Des Moines. Unlike my previous public comments, I will be brief. I know budget considerations are underway. This or any budget needs one critical ingredient, and it does not come with a price tag. It's public trust. If the final product does not produce public trust, the budget will only be a hindrance for the next year. Without public trust, the city will have a hard time getting support for major endeavors, whether you want to bond money, or even for the proposed tax hike on the upcoming ballot. Without public trust, it could also create divisions among city staff. I've seen it happen, and it's not pretty. But I wish you well, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve. Sheri Miller, you've got Des Moines Creek Business Park. Does that tract C or?
State later.
Later? Okay, thanks. Doug Miller, same? All right, thank you. Eileen Lambert. Tract C, thank you. Lloyd?
Thank you, Mayor Buxton, members of the council, city manager, city attorney, city clerk. I was going to speak on tract C, half for half, but I'll save that part for later. The other topic I had today was on the Zenith Hillside. So I was a former Citizens Advisory Committee member for the Zenith neighborhood, and so I still contact, talk with a lot of the neighbors, and had one neighbor call up, and they said, hey, what's going on with those big cranes over on the hillside, right around the, about 234th Street? And yeah, there's like this big 50-foot crane up there drilling holes. And so they were wondering about it initially, because they were concerned about these eagle trees. There's like three, three eagle trees there that they perch in. I didn't even know about this. And they didn't want to see them cut down. One did get cut down, unfortunately. But it, George and I, George is always interested, so we both live in Zenith, so we walked over there, checked it out. And they're drilling these huge, like 60-foot bores into the ground, and they're kind of cementing it on this little tiny lot. It's probably no more than 3,000 to 4,000 square meters. But that was kind of odd, because there's an RS3 rule in particularly for that hillside, and in King County where you got to have at least, I think, 15,000 square feet or something to build, something like that. So obviously, that's not 15,000. But we looked on the land, well, we looked on the King County thing, and the other, I don't know, what would it be, 17,000, is actually in the ocean. So, and it's separated, they're not even continuous. So that was kind of an odd thing. We were just kind of wondering about that. And then also, there's no land use building sign out there for, you pretty much see that on all developments, so we were kind of wondering about that. And then we went on the Des Moines City webpage. Let's see, current land use applications filing and accepting. Land use applications that have been filed and accepted may be viewed on the My Permits website. So we clicked on the My Permits website, and then, let's see here. It gives you the option, please select one of the citizens' portals, click on Select Connection. So we clicked on that, and then it says, in order to view these documents, you have to apply for a Des Moines business license, which is kind of weird, because a business license is kind of separate from just looking at public documents. So that seemed a little bit odd. So I don't know, these are just some questions. In the spirit of transparency, that's why I brought these up, and as a former rep for the Zenith neighborhood, we'd kind of like maybe some answers on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. George Pettibone.
Good evening. George Pettibone from Zenith, Washington, up on top of the hill by the Masonic home. We've been looking at the Masonic home and admiring it for 30-some years, and my interest in it has peaked quite heavily. And so the cranes, the crane that showed up down below on 234th is really strange, and several of my neighbors, just like Lloyd said, several of my neighbors, they said, what is that? So we walked down there and took a look at it. This thing's a good 65 feet tall. It's a monumental, huge, track-driven crane that goes up and up and up and up. And onto it is a 65-foot estimated drill bit. It's about two feet in diameter, same thing as he's saying. I look at it, we watched him, and it's going, it's going, it's going, it keeps on going down. We would like to know, how far down is the glacial till? We need to know what is this hillside made out of. In reality, we now see 17 or 18 or 14 holes that have been drilled in the top of an unstable hillside, which the federal maps indicate it's unstable. The King County says it's unstable. City, City of Des Moines map says it's an unstable hillside. So the guy is spending $200,000 to improve the stability of a sand and rock pile. The sand and rock pile have round rocks brought down from Canada by the glacier that is now known as the, gee, the island across the way. The Maori, the Maori Island and Bashon is, they attach the name Bashon to the gigantic glacier. So this whole hillside is suspicious. King County, originally, 75 years ago, said three houses per acre, per acre of dirt. Didn't say per acre of seashore or underwater surfaces where there's clams and fish. So it appears that it has 20,000 acres, if you count maybe, when, and this is a big question. The top surface appears to be about 4,000 square feet. It's big enough for a big house. It's flat. Then it goes down a cliff full of bushes and trees. And the neighbors, there's four houses plus the Fisher family who own the road, and they put a T on the end of the road, and it's a special zone for trees to not be knocked down. So if you have 20,000 square feet, and you've got 15,000, which is necessary. And if it is out in the ocean, if 12,000, 13,000 are underwater, it's a bogus claim. The guy should never get a building permit from you guys, and he's got it, and he's spending $200,000 on reinforcing a sand pile. And we'd like to know who lets underwater surfaces be counted as a third of an acre. 3,000 or 4,000 is not a third of an acre. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, George. Jim Lempriolo.
Hey, Jim Lempriolo from Des Moines. Just want to thank you all for your time. This is obviously a big-time commitment. Listen to everybody here. I wanted to share my perspective as a voter who ultimately voted yes on the levy-led lift, but came very close to voting no on it. And I think there were a few reasons why I almost voted no. The first was just a lack of clarity on the levy itself. It can be confusing when we talk about a 1% raise. Is that, you know, 1% on the value? Is it 1% on last year's money? You know, I think just getting more clarity on that would help voters understand what the financial situation that the city is in. The second piece would be just a coherent picture of the efforts that the council has put out there to try to solve this crisis. I think we've kind of seen it in bits and pieces, you know, hey, we have a couple hundred thousand we can save here, you know, maybe we've seen different values of what the levy should be. But just a coherent, here's the structure, here's where we are, here's what we've tried, here's where we're going. And then finally, I think it would help to see a clear explanation of the different funds that the city has. So my understanding is that there are certain funds that are, you know, codified by law, certain things that are a little more discretionary, certain things that are maybe somewhat in between. And for somebody who's not living it every day like you all are, it can be really confusing to know, is this a capital project? What is a capital project? Why is that different from somehow, some of the other money that's being spent? So I think my suggestion would be, as you think about this going forward, to put yourself in the position of a citizen who doesn't really have the time to dig into a 200-page budget, and really is going to hear snippets and understand, what's the core information I would want to know as a voting citizen? And what's the best way to communicate that? And then really hammer that home from a publicity perspective? Because otherwise, with the lack of information, you really run into this problem where people are going to fill in the blanks themselves. And that's where you get these, you know, misleading claims or misunderstandings, even if they're done in good faith. So I just wanted to offer my perspective. And in conclusion, I do want to offer condolences to all the Mariners fans out there. It was a rough year. Personally, a Mets fan, so we got at least a couple more days to go. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Ann Craker, is that for the tract C? Tract C, okay, thanks. Alex Reyes. Come on forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, and members of the community. My name is Alex Reyes, and I am a resident of Des Moines. I come before you today with a heavy heart and a sense of urgency regarding Proposition 1, the public safety levy-led lift. As a parent and a concerned citizen, I am deeply worried about the safety of my family and all the residents of our community. The reality is that our Des Moines Police Department is already understaffed, and without the support of the levy, we risk further compromising our resident's safety. We know that certain areas in our city, like Pacific Ridge, ooh, I'm nervous, I'm sorry, experience higher crime rates. By not supporting this levy, you are sending a troubling message that the safety of the people living in those communities does not matter. I'm going to repeat that again. You are sending a message that the safety of the people living in those communities does not matter. This is not just about numbers. This is about real lives and the safety of our families. On Monday night, September 23rd, there was a shooting near Midway Park. A week earlier, on September 15th, a two-year-old child was accidentally shot by her three-year-old sibling. On August 27th, a man was shot and killed at a bus in Des Moines. All three of these prompting our officers to respond. These incidents highlight the urgent need for more resources and support for our police department to serve and protect our city. Each day, our police officers confront an unnerving challenge of safeguarding 32,888 individuals. With limited resources, they must make tough choices about how to use their time and effort. This situation sets a troubling precedent, where they may unintentionally have to weigh the value of lives based on resources at hands, deciding whose life matters, mine or yours. This is not the kind of community we want to be. We should strive for an equitable city where every resident, regardless of where they live, feels safe and valued. Supporting Proposition 1 is a step towards achieving that goal. It ensures that our police department can hire more officers, improve training, and ultimately respond more effectively to the needs of all of our neighborhoods. I urge you all to consider the implications of inaction. The safety of our community is at stake. Please let's come together and show our commitment to protecting every resident in Des Moines. I implore you to show your collective support for Proposition 1 by voting in favor of the resolution on your agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. You did great. Next up, Isaac Helgren.
All right. Isaac Helgren, Vice President, Des Moines Police Guild. I'm also here to speak on behalf of the Des Moines Police Guild in relation to the Public Safety Levy-Lid Lift. Over the last several months, I've had the opportunity to interact with the public as well as the council on this issue, and I'd like to speak to a few of the, my observations as well as the observations of the members. Through my observations in the community and the council meetings, it seems apparent to me that no matter which side of the levy individuals are on, one thing is consistent. There is not a desire to see public safety funding cut, nor to have their police department defunded. What council knows, and what the police guild knows, is that it's not possible to maintain public safety funding as it is today absent the levy passing. Addressing a $4.5 million shortage in a, in a city our size will leave no department untouched, and it will result in some level of reduced offerings and services by the police department. Here's some questions the council and community must ask themselves as we move forward. Do we feel the police service in place now is beyond what is necessary or required to keep Des Moines a safe place to live, visit, and/or do business in? What level of service are you willing to lose? We're already short of proactive policing unit, traffic unit, school resource officer, and K-9 unit. What more should we cut? Detective positions? What felony crimes should we no longer investigate to accommodate this? Patrol staff? Should we reduce the number of officers on the street? What types of calls should we no longer respond to to account for this shortage? Training budget? Equipment budget? How much can we afford to cut before our officer's safety is at risk? To the council, I believe that you all are not as far apart as you may think you are on this issue. You guys recognize and, and offer verbal support for public safety, as well as recognize the budgetary issues that are both long-term and short-term facing us. And that a long-term strategic plan is required to break this cycle of budgetary woes and financial crisis. It seems to be, it seems to be the path going forward that is the conflict, not the issues I believe that this can be navigated, especially with the support of a highly qualified and equipped city manager who was selected unanimously by you all. And that in partnership with her, we can make a difference, and that we can get there, but it's not going to happen overnight. I ask everyone to not view this development of a long-term strategy to address the underlying budgetary issues facing this city as, as well as Proposition 1 is mutually exclusive. We believe precisely the opposite. If Proposition 1 and a long-term strategic plan are done simultaneously, it allows us to take a big step forward without requiring us to take a big step back first. Why downsize the police department, both in personnel and resources, risking the safety of our officers and our community when it's not necessary to achieve the goal of breaking the cycle of budgetary issues faced by the city? It will be years before a well-designed and successful long-term strategic plan will bring back the revenues required to replace the funding to be cut from public safety, and that will only get us back to where we are today. It will take several more years for us to get to a place where we can move beyond the level of service we're offering today, and that every, and that is only if everything goes as anticipated. I've met with, I've met I've met with, I've met with this council, and I believe that they have the determination, skills, and experience, as well as fortitude, to work together, both on council and with our new city manager, to get an effective long-term strategic plan in place. But there's a big difference between having the starting point of roughly $1.5 million deficit versus a $4.5 million deficit. Why not support public safety both today and tomorrow, passing the levy to ensure we not only maintain our level of service, but actually enhance it, while also working for a long-term strategic plan that will fund the entire city into the future? This is a moment that calls for action. We appreciate the sentiments of support that we receive on a nearly daily basis from this community and council. We ask now, in our time of need, that those who believe in supporting public safety and making the city of Des Moines a safe city for our residents, guests, and businesses, to take action beyond their kind words and vote yes to pass Proposition One.
Thank you, Isaac. So there are several people in the hallway, and there were not seats, and there was a misunderstanding about signing in. So I am going to ask, are there people here tonight, especially out there, who came expecting to speak tonight but have not signed up? I'm going to open the floor. Come on up, Vic. So now, are you representing an organization or yourself?
Yeah, I'm representing myself. I want to speak, Vic Pennington, City of Des Moines. I want to speak on a little bit of my experience. And, you know, I'm a former deputy mayor and retired fire chief for South King Fire. And the fire district lives on levies. For the seventy-five years they've been in existence, they live on levies. So I want to talk about what changed between August and now. In August, on the ballot, was a fire benefit charge. And that was a change in the way that the fire district was funded. The fire district is funded by a levy rate of a dollar fifty per thousand of assessed valuation. With the benefit charge, and what was unknown then, what we know now, the benefit charge, now that that was successful, the fire district has to give away fifty cents of their dollar fifty. So that creates some expanded levy capacity. By the RCW, they can only collect a dollar per thousand if they have a benefit charge in place. In nineteen eighty-six, I think it was, the city of Des Moines, this is important, it's going to come back in a minute, the city of Des Moines annexed into King County Fire District 26, which is now part of South King Fire. In nineteen ninety-four, the city of Des Moines annexed into the King County Library system. Okay? So now, let's come to, forward to today. The, the, the city of Des Moines has a levy capacity based on the $5.90 that you heard Jeff talk about over the last few meetings. They have a levy capacity of $3.60. $3.75 if you're not annexed into a, a fire district and/or a library district. So they have a levy capacity of $3.60. Now, since they're annexed in there, the city has to, is encumbered with that dollar per thousand for the fire district to take out of their levy capacity. It's also encumbered with the twenty-eight cents from the, the library district. So right now, the fire district and mayor, I'm going to ask for a little bit of, of privilege to go over my time on this. Just, it'll be short.
As a former fire chief representing that segment, I'll give you...
So what, what happens is, right now, what you're paying in 2024 is a dollar and seventy-three cents and a whole bunch of little change over here, but I'll do it in round numbers, a dollar and seventy-three cents per thousand. That includes the dollar fifty and twenty-three cents for a maintenance and operation levy. At the fire district, we have historically lived on that for, for years. That, that allows us to buy new fire engines, allows us to, to do work on our fire stations, and it does that type of work for us. So that's a dollar and seventy-three cents. The city, the, the city itself has an eighty-nine cents levy that they take out of that $3.60, and the library district has twenty-eight cents. So now, what has changed with the fire benefit charge? The, the city, or the, the fire district is only charged, only charging a buck per thousand. The rest of that money is made up by the benefit charge, and that is shifted from residential to primarily commercial and multifamily. That's where the, the largest hazard and the most resources are used to, to put out fires, not single-family residences. So that's why the reduction and the shift. So, and, and after you, you take your $3.60 and you eliminate, you know, in 2024, take your $3.60, you take out the eighty-nine cents, you take out the dollar seventy-three, and you take out the twenty-eight cents, you have a levy rate of $2.90 per thousand. And, and now, in 2025, you'll have a levy rate, because remember, you're giving, that fifty cents is coming back, and the twenty-three cents is no longer going to be collected in 2025, nor will the fire district go out for an M and O levy. All that goes into the benefit charge. So your levy rate now for 2025 will be $2.67. So there's, so you're taking the fifty cents that the city's asking for, it would have been a levy hike. That isn't, because of this fifty cents, it's no longer a levy hike. It's an even trade. You're taking public safety money that's encumbered for the fire department, and you want to encumber it for the city, for the police department. There's another, the M and O levy goes away, and they won't be asking for that again. So you have a twenty-three cent, you're paying twenty-three cents less per thousand in 2025 than you are this year. I would highly recommend that the city council support this, because it's very important. And to Isaac's point, when you get behind the eight ball...
Vic, that was five.
Okay.
Okay, so...
You get behind the eight ball, it's hard to catch up. That happened to the fire district, and now, almost twenty years later, we're finally able to catch up after the depression. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vic. So is there anybody else who came in tonight expecting to speak, didn't realize they needed to sign up, or weren't able to sign up at the podium? Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for your public comments. All right. So we are going to make a quick, a short agenda change. We will not receive committee chair reports tonight because of the length of the agenda. That will be postponed to a future business meeting. Well, and now, next up, we have the city managers' report. I'm going to hand that over to City Manager Tim George.
Thank you, Mayor. We only have one item tonight. We have a presentation from Lighthouse Northwest, which is an organization that the city funds. And so I would like to introduce their development director to come up to the mic here. We'll put her presentation on, and this is Bobby Joe Shockley to give us the presentation tonight. Thank you, Bobby.
Mayor and city council and community, thank you so much for having us. My name is Bobby Joe Shockley, and I'm with Lighthouse Northwest. And we're a local nonprofit right here in Des Moines, whose commitment is to breaking the cycle of abuse, one relationship at a time, and to help our community thrive. And I am so excited to share an update about what has happened here in the city through Lighthouse in the last year. And I want to thank Des Moines for their generous support, and also for recognizing the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I also want to make a note that our executive director, Sarah Tuttle, apologizes for not being here, but she became ill today. You might wonder, why does Lighthouse exist? Why do we do what we do? And the statistics and our experience, working in the field for over a decade, tells us that one in three women will experience domestic abuse. And that's regardless of socioeconomic status, race, religion, or education. So that's one in three in your workplace, one in three in your neighborhood, and one in three in this room. Every year, we know that ten million children witness domestic violence in their home, which breaks down to one in fifteen kiddos. And those kids who witness abuse are three times more likely to be perpetrators of abuse as adults or victims of abuse as adults. Because abuse is a learned pattern of behavior. We also know that domestic violence is the third-leading cause of homelessness. And you might see these statistics and think, oh, man, that is alarming. And it's true. And we know that the need is great, but we also know that there is hope. And after eleven years of serving families here in our community, I can confidently say that change is possible. Breaking the cycle of abuse is possible. New life is possible for anyone who is given a chance, for anyone who is given resources and a safe and supportive community to heal and to rebuild. And that is exactly what Lighthouse provides. We have two different programs and ways that we do this. The first is our Awareness and Action Program, where we provide training and ongoing consultation to communities and businesses to equip them to participate in the prevention and the intervention of domestic abuse. And we share the realities of abuse and how to recognize it and effectively respond in ways that bring genuine help. And this past year, we've attended countless community events and met with local organizations to continue to improve services to providers. And the second part of our programming is our RISE program, and that's for women and children. And through RISE, we provide a trauma-informed approach to healing and building a thriving, independent life and healthy relationships. We believe that healing happens in the context of relationship, and that a new, sustainable life develops within a safe and supportive community. And through RISE, we provide safe community and critical services and proven resources, including advocacy, mentoring, life skill training, counseling, financial coaching, case management, parenting, and communication coaching, assistance with education and job training for the women in our program, we have children's programs, safe housing, and so much more. And in our RISE program, we have two different parts. The first is Sasha's House, and that is our community living home here in Des Moines, where we can house three families at a time for up to two years for each family. And the families that are coming to us are, they come to us after facing homelessness due to domestic abuse. And when they graduate, they're able to have sustainable, new, thriving lives that they love. They partner with their care team, their program manager, their advocate, to stabilize first, and then to identify what are their obstacles to a thriving, independent life. And then they work with the staff to overcome these obstacles and to achieve their goals. We have amazing community partners who also help us provide karate classes, chiropractic care, gym memberships, yard and house care, meals, and again, so many other resources. And, and... In 2023, which is our first year of funding from the city of Des Moines, you helped us to provide safety, housing, and critical care for eighteen women and children at Sasha's House, which included fifteen Des Moines residents and three residents of CTAC. And since January 2024, the city has helped us provide safety, housing, and critical care for thirteen women and children, including six Des Moines residents and seven residents of neighboring cities, which equates to over 2,421 nights of safe housing and support for those families since January. We are thrilled to report that we've fulfilled the requirements of bed nights and residence served and case management through our contract with the city of Des Moines in just the first quarter of this year. Your funding is making a huge impact for our programs, for the families in our programs, and then for generations to come. A woman at Sasha's House recently shared, "My life has changed so much for the better since moving into Sasha's House. My daughters and I arrived with literally the clothes on our backs and nothing else. I was not in the best shape physically, emotionally, mentally, or spiritually. It was such a blessing to not stress about where to sleep at night or how to take a shower. We were finally safe. Within just a few short months, we were flourishing tremendously. We got into therapy, I started school, and have grown in my confidence. Here, I've learned my full value and worth, and realized I am capable and worth fighting for. Every day, I wake up and thank God for the safety, peace, love, support, comfort, guidance, and stability I experience at Sasha's House. My daughters and I have been able to heal and grow and build the life we deserve. I could not have gotten this far on my own. Life is hard, but here, hard is turned into blessings and a better future." Just yesterday, we moved a new mom and her little one into Sasha's House. And before a new family moves in, the women who are already in the home write letters to welcome them, and here's an excerpt from one of those. "I'm glad you're here. It means you're safe. When I first came to Sasha's House, I didn't have a car, a driver's license, income, or any understanding of healthy boundaries. During my time here, I've been able to focus on my healing journey, and I got a driver's license, a car. And next thing you know, I'm graduating from a medical program and lined up for a nice-paying job. Sasha's House has been a place of rest and growth for me and my children. It gave me the rare opportunity to rebuild my life from scratch and unlearn toxic behaviors. I'm not the same person who arrived here, and I love that." And it's so exciting, because we witness miracles at Sasha's House all the time, and it's beautiful and inspiring to watch the women and children heal, and to build thriving, sustainable, new lives they love. The second part of RISE is our community support groups, and those are open to any woman who has ever experienced abuse or trauma, whether that was recently, whether that was yesterday, or whether that was decades ago, as a child. Women of all ages, so we have nineteen through women in their seventies who are participating during support group, and we dive into topics that address the impact of abuse and the healing process, self-care, emotional health, communication, identity, trust, healthy boundaries, and more. And we provide enrichment workshops and activities each month, and it is amazing to witness the tremendous healing and growth, as well as the safe and supportive community that the women are forming through our RISE support groups. When we launched the support groups less than two years ago, we had just five women and kids participating, and that quickly grew to sixty in 2023. And since January of this year, we've had, sorry, sixty-one women and children have participated in support groups, which included thirty-two Des Moines residents and twenty-nine residents from neighboring cities. And we just launched a new group this month, and they aren't in those totals yet. And I'd like to share a few quotes from some women in our support group. "Being able to talk things out from my past that I hadn't healed from in a safe environment is what seems to be helping. No judgment, no opinions telling me what to do or not do. Sharing with people who've been through similar events is helpful. I feel more and more healed with every support group." Another woman shared, "The support group is giving me the space to reflect on the impact of my childhood trauma, to heal and grow into who I was created to be." And finally, "Being able to hear my thoughts and feelings in the voices of others has given me a community I never had before, and that has given me hope and made me feel a lot less alone." And our heart is to let women in Des Moines and the surrounding area know that we are here, that you are not alone, and that you are welcome to join us at Support Group. And I have information about that. I'll be here after the council meeting, and so feel free to come up and connect, and I would love to give you information. And we are excited to launch, that we're, in October, we are starting kind of the beta version of our men's program, that we're developing a program for men who have experienced abuse as well. And I, we've been putting together some statistics, and also want to share that, since Sasha's House opened in 2013, we've housed fifty-nine women and children, and walked beside an additional 243 women, and this does not count the people who have participated in our RISE Support Group. Since 2019, when we started actually tracking the numbers, we've received and returned over fourteen-hundred... over 1,400 calls from women in need of help. And since 2022, also when we started tracking, we've connected 350 individuals to partnering organizations for resources and housing. And none of this would not, would have been possible without the incredible support of this city and of our community members. So, thank you so much. And October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and maybe you're wondering, how can I get involved and help break the cycle of abuse and bring hope to those who are in desperate need of it? And I want to invite you to one of our events that is coming up in October. On Saturday, October 19th, we are partnering with the Des Moines Creek Park Run at 9:00 a.m. for a 5K, and you can walk or run that to raise awareness and support and let people know that we're here in the city. And we're going to have an after-party at Quarterdeck, and she's donating proceeds from hot cocoa sales and mimosa flights. Our online auction goes live tomorrow evening at 6:00 p.m. You can purchase raffle tickets for a two-night stay and $100 gift card. And also, we have our event at the Des Moines Beach Park Auditorium on the night of the 19th, from 6:00 to 8:30. We're going to have live painting and music, and our auction and raffle closes, a dessert dash, and there will be women from our programs speaking and sharing their stories, delicious charcuterie and drinks. And I would love to, if you'd like more information, I have postcards that I can give out, where you can register and learn more, and feel free to talk to me afterwards. And thank you so much for this opportunity to share an update. Thank you for your commitment, Des Moines, to help breaking the cycle of domestic abuse in our city. We are so grateful for our partnership with the city of Des Moines while we work together to create a thriving, healthy community for all of us to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shockley. And Mayor, that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. So, moving on to our unanimous consent agenda, would the city clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Item four, acceptance of Foundation of Washington State Courts grants. Item five, municipal court interlocal agreement for peer support services. Item six, creating a public, public safety levy fund. Item seven, contract with EHM Washington LLC to provide electronic monitoring services. Item eight, lodging tax advisory committee appointment. Item nine, resolution opposing initiative measure number 2117 concerning carbon, carbon tax credit trading. And that concludes the consent calendar, Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve the consent calendar as read, Mayor.
Do I have a second? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz had his hand up there. Is there an item that a council member wishes to pull? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
I'd like to pull number six.
Number six. And any other item? Councilmember Oxiger?
I'd like to pull number eight.
Eight? Any others? I'd like to pull number nine. So, will, any others? We will now be considering, we will now be considering consent items one, two, three, four, five, seven, as read. All in favor? It's unanimous, seven, zero. Thank you very much. So, next up, we will read the proclamation, because in that consent list was a proclamation recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we have Bobby Joe to read that proclamation for us.
Whereas every one of our residents deserves to live a life free from violence and abuse, and whereas anyone can be a victim of domestic violence regardless of age, sex, ability, ethnicity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, or religion. And whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for our community to learn more about preventing domestic abuse and to show support for numerous organizations and individuals providing critical advocacy, services, and assistance to its victims. Now, therefore, the city, the Des Moines City Council wishes to recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourages the community to ensure that victims of domestic violence know that they are not alone and are here to support survivors of domestic violence as they are courageously move forward to enjoy full and healthy lives. Signed, this 26th day of September, 2024.
Thank you so much. So, next, we are going to move to start with our pulled items, number six. I think that was pulled by Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. Go ahead.
Madam, do you need me to make the motion in order to begin the discussion on it? Or is this just discussion on it?
It's, it's questions, or I'm offering you why you pulled it, and then we'll have a motion and a discussion, so.
Yeah. Well, the reason, the reason why I pulled it is, we've heard from a lot of people, and since putting the proposal to put the levy lid lift on the ballot, we have said those funds will be segregated. We've heard from a lot of people that, you know, frankly, there's just not that level of trust that Jim talked about earlier, and so we're going to address that. We're going to create a law that says the money from the levy lid lift funds goes into a separate account. We'll do that through a city ordinance, and therefore, it is trackable, it is transparent, and you can see it. I was under the impression we actually had to have the funding resource in place before we could enact that law. I have since been corrected. Thank you very much. And so, here it is. This is what a lot of people have told me they want. They want to see that this money isn't going to be spent somewhere else, and this is how we do it. And that's why I pulled this item, so that we can discuss that publicly and see if anybody still has objections to it. I hope they don't.
Any questions before the motion? Would you like to make the motion?
Yes, I move to adopt draft ordinance number 24-077, establishing a special revenue fund in Chapter 3.51 of the Des Moines Municipal Code entitled Public Safety Revenue Fund.
Do I have a second? Second, a second with Councilmember Mahoney. Any discussion? Councilmember Harris?
So, I will be voting no on this. I did not pull the item because basically, I did not want to give one more opportunity to the city to sell, 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 because that's essentially what this is. It's like, let's just find every opportunity. Once isn't enough, two are better, sometimes three, at every meeting, to sell. And the truth is, we set up something similar in 2006, and it did not work. It doesn't, there, we are, we have the ability as a council to move money around. It's all very well to talk about separate funds and that, but that is basically a, it's accounting. Any council can override any such ordinance every year. We do so every year with one-time sales tax, and, and so, you know, it's great to do this if the ballot initiative were to pass, but it's unnecessary to do it. I, I would just say, why not wait and, and see the outcome of the election before putting in staff time to work up this kind of, because this is legal work. So, it's just an opportunity to further sell the initiative, and it's not a great initiative. So, I will vote no. Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney?
I want to be perfectly clear. When we proposed this levy, every discussion we've ever had was this money would be allocated in a separate fund, tracked, and so forth. It's never been different. But unfortunately, even from this dais, misinformation has gone to the public saying otherwise. This statement right here basically says, "We are serious about this money being there, and it needs to be done to ensure that the public has the trust that money's going to be there." It was going to be anyway, but because of some misinformation and lack of understanding in our budget and the budget process and the numbers and so forth, quite frankly, this has to be done to ensure that people get the point that we are serious about it. What, what, what nobody can dispute, and any opponent never does in this whole thing, is a 20%, over 20% increase in costs and only a 40% increase in, or 4% increase in revenue. That's a gap to cover, and it's very difficult. A lot of things will suffer without this levy, even more so they will than if we get it and we still have to make cuts. But in this particular case, we're talking about ensuring and telling the public that we're going to take this money, it's going to be tracked, and it's, you're going to demonstrate where it's going to be used for public safety. It's not going to be moved around. Any comment to the contrary is just flat-out nonsense. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
This is about trust and transparency. This is what everybody says they want from this council. This is what we're trying to meet. This council passes laws, they're called ordinances in the city, and yes, a subsequent council can change that, but if they do, you have to see that publicly. It's a very public process. It's not just a special fund in a budget somewhere. This is created by a law, so it takes a vote. If you, a future council tries to mess with this money, you know exactly what to do with that council, because this is our pledge to you, that this money will be spent in the way that you do it. Now, as Mr. Pennington pointed out, this is going to be a wash for most people. For most homeowners, you are not going to see an increase in your property taxes because of the fire benefits charge, which you supported. It passed. And since it passed, that money frees up another 50 cents that already exists that you're paying for in 2024 that you just continue paying in 2025. Instead of paying it for fire, it goes to the police. And everything that we can do here is being done to try to make sure that it is transparent and it is spent the way you intend it, because that's what we need from you in order to help protect and improve public safety. Mr. Quinn told us tonight, budgets need public trust. I don't know what else we could do on this particular issue to build that trust, but I think it's very important, and we will spend it exactly the way it is intended and clarified, so that we all know the public safety levy lid lift will be spent on public safety. Please support this. Thank you. I will.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Harris?
We will vote to override an ordinance in a couple of, yeah, next month. Basically, it's just, I don't, this is going to be a long meeting, but we're, we're literally going to override one of our own budgetary ordinances next month. We do it like every frickin' year, and I'm just trying to, it's been going on for decades and decades, and it's painful, but I just, we're, we're, we're going to get there, but somebody at some point had to say enough. And for me, that, this is it. Thank you.
Any other comments? I guess my, my comment is, we're doing this as a message to the public that we're backing our word. Okay, take it to the vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Mahoney, and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsui, and Councilmember Harris. So, it's four to three. Thank you. Passes. All right. Next up is, there was a poll on item number eight, and I think that that was Councilmember Oxiger. If you could introduce it, and then we'll take questions before motion.
Yes, this is an appointment to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. And, you know, as we are working to try and deal with the budget deficit, it's, you know, important to know what pots of money are where, you know, how they operate, and who's on advisory committees that deal with these things. I checked the website today. I've made this complaint before. This information is not available. This is not a slam on McKenzie Myers, who's being appointed here, but what it is, I want to bring it up, that once again, we're not being transparent on these things. We don't know how much money is in that fund. We don't know, you know, particularly where it's going. We know that, you know, some of this money was justified for hiring the, renewing the contract for the passenger ferry, but we go into these things blind. So, you know, I am going to vote for this, because I don't think that the appointment of McKenzie Myers, I had, I have no objection to that. But it's once again raised the issue that we're not being transparent. So, do you need a motion?
So, any questions before we take a motion? Okay, go ahead. I'm going to offer the motion to you, Councilmember Oxiger.
Okay. I move to confirm the mayoral appointment of McKenzie Myers to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. If that could be made.
Second, I'll give that to Councilmember Nutting. Any discussion? Councilmember Harris?
Councilmember Oxiger's point is well-taken. Back in the 90s, when the original Des Moines website was created, it was common practice to have a quarterly update on the members of various advisory committees and report out the minutes of their ongoing work product. At some point, that stopped happening, and that would solve the problem fairly quickly. I struggle with all of these things, because we'll hear from advisory committees, even, it's awkward, because at the end of the year, you get this one review of the Human Services budget, and it's all super worthy, but it's just, it comes out of the blue, and who wants to be the person to comment on, you know, any of these 30 different projects? So, just putting a quarterly, you know, update to the website, I think would solve a lot of your concerns. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
Yeah. I, I just want to point out that the concerns that are being expressed here tonight have nothing to do with the appointment of McKenzie Meyer. And, and frankly, they go to process issues, and we are in a very long transition to a whole new way of doing things. That happened last November. It happened in January, and now, in the beginning of November, we're going to have a new city manager, and things are going to get changed. I understand people are frustrated and want more information on that website. I do too. I share the same concerns. But don't let this, and, you know, furthermore, Human Services, this is, this is the lodging tax. There, there's no relationship between those monies and the other monies. So, let's just keep focused on what is truly ahead of us, which is, the issue is whether or not to appoint her to that, and not to choose another chance to, in the words of somebody else up here, sell, 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 because it's a broken record. That's why we all feel the need to do that up here, is to repeat things over and over again, to make sure it gets heard as far. And, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. Let's, let's just appoint McKenzie to the committee, and we will make it more transparent in the future. We've heard that. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? All right, we had a motion in a second. Comments? All in paper? Raise your right hand. Seven, zero. Great. Congratulations, McKenzie. Okay, next up is consent number nine, and that was the item to consider the draft resolution expressing the city council's opposition to the ballot initiative, measure 2117, that was spoken about tonight concerning carbon tax credit trading. And so, I was the one who pulled it, and I have three questions, so I'm hoping that, hoping somebody might have the answer. So, is Des Moines, depending on carbon, the Climate Commitment Act funding for any current projects? Do we know the answer? Do we know the answer to that? Okay. If two one one seven passes, do we know if any of these are at risk? But we didn't, nobody.
Well, I guess I would say that some of this funding is, is funding ferry initiatives all over the Puget Sound, which the city is very involved in. And so if this were not to pass, essentially all those efforts at the state level would be shut down because they wouldn't have funding for them. So, at the moment, the city is not receiving funding from these sources, but in our future endeavors, hoping to get the passenger ferry service on someone else's dime, like we've discussed, it would very much likely come from some of these funds.
Okay. And then I think earlier we heard there's some port, port mitigation options that might come from this as well. So, those are my questions. I will go ahead and make the motion since I was the puller. Oh, actually, I'm not going to make the motion and I will talk about that in the discussion. Somebody want to make that motion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to adopt draft resolution number twenty-four dash zero eight zero in opposition to ballot initiative measure two one one seven concerning carbon tax credit trading on the November fifth, twenty twenty-four general election ballot.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Mahoney, a second. Any discussion other than, go ahead, I'll call Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and then Councilmember Mahoney.
Yeah, I, I, I intend to support this. I, I think, you know, initiative measure two one one seven is extremely ill conceived. I think it will have a very negative impact on their state's ability to address future climate issues. And that's, that's an important thing that we position ourselves to get into a place where we can do that. We talked briefly about the ferry initiatives, but this is far beyond that. It's about, this money can be used to fund electric charging stations. I mean, Des Moines has a serious problem that we just don't have anywhere in town to charge an electric vehicle if you've chosen to drive an electric vehicle. If we want the police or fire or the city to do that, we have no way to create that infrastructure to do that. This is what those kinds of funds can be used for. You may have seen some of the ads that talk about much broader projects in the state, but I'm trying to get it down to, these are the things in Des Moines that we're trying to do to move into the future, to move into a position where we were no longer dependent upon energy sources that use greenhouse gas, or that create greenhouse gases. And this is a big deal. If this goes away, we're setting ourselves way behind. And I think that it's important as a city, as you heard from Mr. Davis, who's from Burien, you know, that this really does have some tremendous impacts and it would be important for us to take a position as a council to say, no, this is not a good, this is just simply not a good deal for Washington. Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney?
As a member of many transportation organizations throughout the, not only the city, but as well as regionally and even statewide, one of the biggest concerns is that should this pass, we basically look at, we basically look at the budgets of, of transportation, multimodal transportation, all the things we're trying to do to go to efforts to go more green. And it's amazing what would have to be cut and shut down for our future should this, should this, should this pass. For our city, we do have some irons in the fire where this money has been talked about as potential, but of course, nobody wants to make any type of commitment in this regard that we could use them for good because this opposition has people nervous. And, or this, 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 this initiative has that, had effect on them. So what it's done is kind of put the brakes to what a lot of progress that had already been routed, where, like I said, like you mentioned, many of the projects that we're talking about, and, and, and without it, our, our options severely diminish. And it's not likely, infrastructure wise, we can be responsible in a green way as we move forward without, if, should this pass. So I will support this motion as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, I do have a set. The issue is highly controversial and I wasn't in favor of asking our council to take a public stand. I mean, just because I, I knew I was in for some research before I needed to when the ballot comes out and, but even Bob Ferguson is not mentioning it on his website. So I spent a couple hours reading about this issue, way too much time for a consent item. This summary from my research is that the CCA, this carbon trading, caps carbon emissions and asks offenders to purchase credits at auction. These purchases become a resource for the state to use in green projects. Sounds good. My discomfort though, in this part, is as long as the credits are cheaper than a remedy, an industry does not need to stop emissions. In other words, the CCA makes money from emissions and it doesn't outlaw them. Possibility is that large chunks would end up going to organizations for mitigation for projects that also negatively impact local communities. And we have a large organization right next door that does that. A quote from Forbes magazine, "For the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five biennium, the Washington State Legislature has appropriated three point two billion dollars mainly for transportation and buildings, but other climate mitigation and adaptation projects as well." So that, that applies to the statement I just said about what organizations can use it for. So it's hard to get an initiative passed on a state ballot and it's hard for me to know how many of our residents signed. It's a pretty unique situation we got here. On the other hand, this resource may fund projects in Des Moines that I love and am hard, and, and am hard after some of these. I spent a lot of time on some of these projects that, that this money could fund. Ferries, as was mentioned, electrification, which is fabulous, green projects, as well as mitigation, which was mentioned earlier. So I am, after all this reading and thinking, I just had way too many other things. So I'm, I'm like this, I am going to abstain tonight. So if there are no other comments, I'm going to take it to a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxger, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Mahoney and Councilmember Harris, opposed, none, abstain. I abstain. All right. That takes care of our consent calendar for the evening. Thank you. So next up, we have a public hearing. The purpose of this agenda item is for the city council to hold a public hearing to consider the surplus, sale and easement of the, of the, of and through track C. I will now open the public hearing. We will begin with staff comments from Matt Hutchins.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Matthew Hutchins, acting city attorney, city of Des Moines. This is a continuation of the public hearing that was begun on September twelfth to consider the surplus and sale of track C in the Des Moines Business Park, as well as to accept a trail easement. Just as a little refresher from where we were on September twelfth, this is an aerial view of track C. As you can see, it's a approximately twenty thousand square foot of vacant land. It is intended for a future access road. It does not contain any wetlands or mature trees. In twenty sixteen, track C was dedicated to the city at no cost from the Port of Seattle as part of the development of the earlier phases of the business park. In twenty eighteen, the city council approved the placement of an access road on the tract. The issue before the council tonight is whether to approve sale of the tract to make it private access. So if the property is sold to allow for private access, the road will be built, development of the Business Park West property will proceed and the city will receive fair market value of track C, which is six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And the port will be responsible for maintaining the private road. The council does not, to surplus the tract, the road will be built, the development of the port parcel will proceed, but the city will maintain ownership of the parcel, receive no proceeds from the sale, and the city will maintain responsibility for maintaining the road. The other issue the council will be determining tonight is the trail easement. Here is an aerial view of the trail easement location. The construction of the trail was a requirement of the development agreement that was previously approved by the city council. The new trail will provide access from the Barnes Creek Trail to the Des Moines Creek Trail, as well as to the eastern portion of the business park. Staff's recommendation is to approve the easement. So the substantive issues related to the Des Moines Creek Business Park development, there is an opportunity for public comment at, a determination on, on the substantive issues at a later date. A hearing has been set for October eighteenth, which will provide opportunity again for public comment. And that concludes staff presentation. Thank you.
All right. It's now time for the public comment portion of this public hearing. Please keep your comments restricted to the subject of the hearing while recognizing that the development of Des Moines Creek West property is a subject of another hearing on October eighteenth. So please keep your comments respectful and understand that anyone speaking or acting in a disruptive manner will be removed from the meeting. Please state your name and city of residence when you approach the podium and when you approach, you will have three minutes to speak. Just want to reiterate, please do keep it to the sale of track C. All right. The first person we have up is Olivia Bronson.
Hello, council, mayor, residents, community members. My name is Olivia Bronson. I am a homeowner. I'm the chef at Marina Mercantile. I recognize some of you as my customers there. I'm a local artist. You may have seen the red winged blackbird on the poster. That's my work. I did not use AI. I painted that by hand. Today, I am here to urge city council to consider halting or placing a moratorium on the sale of track C of the Des Moines Creek West project. My house is not only under the flight path, we've talked about the impacts of the port on homes, but I'm directly adjacent to Des Moines Creek, which happens to be downstream of this area and in that watershed. You may be already aware that parts of the creek, including the area my property is on, are within landslide zones. Areas like this are really efficient natural buffers that prevent erosions and down, and downstream landslides in coastal communities like ours. Des Moines is on the coast, obviously. Converting this forest area into a massive four hundred plus thousand square foot industrial building will have negative impact on the environment regardless of politics or money. And it will be tax exempt after it's owned by the port, so it will produce no additional revenue for the city, which we're all talking about budget stuff here, so I think that's relevant. And beyond any theoretical jobs it might create, and we all know trickle down economics, pun intended, don't work, so I want to get that out of the way. Before moving forward, I do ask you to consider the following impacts. Des Moines is already one of the most environmentally impacted communities by port expansion.
Olivia, excuse me for a second.
Yeah.
So are you talking about the development or track C?
Track C.
Okay.
Yes. Five hundred or so trees on the slot means further impact from noise, water and air pollution. Des Moines Water District fifty-four has already documented concerns of threats to their wells down slope from this project development. Stormwater drainage has already failed in these areas, hastening erosion. I've seen the results directly behind my house. I live next to Des Moines Creek.
So Olivia, I, I am going to, so five, there aren't any trees on track C. I'm really going to try and encourage you to stay to track C.
Okay.
It's that, it's just the little road area there. So you are talking about the development? And I appreciate.
I use the public egress there as a pedestrian route to and from, and my concern is any impact on trees, like replacement of trees, whatever development happens, like I want more public oversight on that. This has been a very rapid fire development and the public deserves to have comments.
Keep going.
Yeah. And removing the, the egress that is regularly used by dog walkers, bird watchers, cyclists, joggers, enthusiasts will not only harm the habitat of animals, it will remove a valuable source of pedestrian egress for me. I can't walk to work without going on Des Moines Memorial Highway, which you know has no sidewalk. So I just feel like we deserve more public oversight on that and a little more time and, and public, because we want to work with you, not against you, on developing of that tract of land. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Olivia. All right, next up, Sheri Miller.
My name is Sheri Miller. I've been a resident of Des Moines for over thirty-five years. I regularly use this area, the Barnes Creek and Des Moines Creek Trails for walking and cycling. And this, just as a generic option, you know, this open space is a very peaceful oasis for the whole ongoing noise of traffic and airplanes. When the, Des Moines City Council released Michael Mathias from his contract, they said it was to pivot. We should not feel beholden to a plan put in place by the former city manager. The sale of part of this land would be a continuation that does not make sense for us in twenty twenty-four and in the era of climate change. Let's wait for the new city manager to review the sale and put a pause on this sale tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Doug Miller.
My name is Doug Miller. My wife and I have been residents of Des Moines for thirty-five years. For the past seventeen years, we are and have been users of both the Barnes Creek and Des Moines Creek Trails. We rock and ride bikes on them on a weekly basis, along with hundreds of other people that we see every week. We feel these trails and tracks C are priceless in terms of both recreation and environmental importance for the citizens of Des Moines and Des Moines Creek. This track is part of the last sliver of critical riparian zone for the creek and the direct drainage into Puget, and its direct drainage into Puget Sound. It is a very important pollution and filter barrier. The riparian zone and green space has been called in weak and unhealthy, which is false and dismissive. We know it is not a wilderness area, but it is indeed populated with large beautiful trees, undergrowth and wildlife. It is also enjoyed daily by hundreds of residents for its peace and beauty. Any monies obtained by the sale of this riparian area for industrial development will be spent and gone in a short while, just as the critical green space will be gone forever. There is no mitigation that can overcome the negative environmental impact of a four hundred car parking lot and many thousand square feet of buildings, especially built directly on top of Des Moines Creek and the sound. Please do the right thing for the community and the environment. Please do not sell either cell two sixteen, which is currently part of the trails I'm talking about, or the connection, or track C. Also, I find it a little strange that we want to separate the sale of this road with the sale of this tract. With, if we don't sell the tract, there's no reason to worry about the road. The road will become a driveway for the, for the builder that wants to build the, the building and the parking lot on the track. If we use it for, if we hold on to that and do some proper studies and realize how important the whole entire area is, there's no need to worry about the road if, if we don't sell the tract. The road's only a problem for, for the city to maintain if we go ahead and sell the tract. So I find that a little confusing that this, the separation has occurred. Anyway, thank you for your time.
So I would, I would like to take a moment here to offer a little bit of clarity and I'm hoping that there are a couple maps here. So I, I appreciate the comments tonight and the desire, but I think there is a little bit of a confusion about what people are asking for. So when we're talking about the road and the tract, it's the same thing. We are not talking about selling. If you could go back to, I saw a photo slide of the whole, of the whole area where the trail's going to be. Okay. I think some people that are testifying tonight think that we are selling that piece of property right there. And that's not true. That's, that's already owned by the Port of Seattle. So there is a little road, there's, there's just the road there that's being, okay. There's a, there's just the road there that's being, okay, see where the middle, see where that black line goes down the middle, where the road looks like it hit, makes a Y, like a sideways Y? To your left, that's the part that's owned by, um, the Port of Seattle, and that's where the development's gonna be. These other two, and then if you go where it says Lot C, private drive, on the top is a stormwater retention pond, and on the bottom is a stormwater retention pond, and there's a road in the middle of those two. So the only thing that we're talking about selling tonight is that where it says Lot C, private drive, it's a, it's a road. That's all that we're talking about tonight. And, um, so...
Point of order, Mayor, perhaps?
Yes, sir. For clarity.
Uh, it, it would be appropriate to have, um, Mr. Hutchins or another representative of the city take questions as to, um...
Well, um, the, it's not that portion of the meeting yet.
No, I, I understand, but you're explaining the thing, and, and I would say it's better to just let people say what they have to say or have the attorney, um, address the specifics.
Well, I, the reason why is I am, I am having some tension and trouble here trying to preside over a meeting when I ask people to testify about one thing and they think they are. And so I don't want to keep interrupting citizens and when they're not testifying about the correct thing. And that's what I'm trying to bring clarity. This is a very unique situation here. So, um, what, this is what I am gonna do. I will let everybody continue to testify your three minutes, but I'm asking if you would wait to get some clarity when the council can ask questions at the attorney, because I think that there's still some confusion about what's happening tonight. Okay, I'm gonna go to the next person, Eileen Lambert.
Good evening, uh, mayor, uh, city council members. Uh, my name is Eileen Lambert. I am, sorry, um, apologies. I never go fuck, so. I am a Des Moines resident, a homeowner, a business owner, a community builder, running community groups, including the Des Moines, uh, birders group, um, also involving women in tech groups, um, and I'm also a second-generation Latina woman, and I strongly believe in representation. I urge the city council to pause the vote on the sale of tract C for the following reasons. I wish to bring in the issue of equity into this public forum. Impacted residents have not received sufficient communication and/or notice to comment. I, like many, were completely caught unaware that this vote was originally scheduled for two weeks ago. Uh, there have been several ongoing and, and major gaps in communication regarding initiatives impacting, so, Des Moines residents. I speak for my Latinx community who have not been properly communicated with in, within Spanish language communication channels. Uh, we have, myself have translated materials into Spanish to do outreach to those impacted communities. And, uh, my third main point is that our incoming city manager, as I'm aware, does not begin until November, um, until that new city manager is onboarded, properly brought up to speed, ha- has her chance to wrap her head and her mind around all of the ongoing issues that are very top of mind to Des Moines residents. I, I would, I would ask that she give, be given that opportunity to first hear these concerns, which we are now publicly documenting for her to review, and, and that she could weigh in on such an instrumental, um, on such a decision that's instrumental to, uh, future development considerations. Oh, sorry, I lied, there's four points. The opposition is growing based on the two issues of concerned, uh, concerns above, that the voting, tax-paying citizens and constituents who are your stakeholders and suffer the long-term consequences on major decisions impacting our city's future growth and subsequent loss of undeveloped, undeveloped spaces to recreate, to enjoy activities without the increased airplane noise and worsening air quality that development and former green spaces negatively contributes to. The voting, tax-paying citizens and constituents wish to voice that people not profit should be the deciding factor on moving a decision forward. And lastly, uh, we understand that the developer in question, or the developer that has been mentioned, has indeed connected the purchase of this tract C by the Port of Seattle to their ability to develop the property even further. Thank you, thank you, council, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Next up, Ann Craker.
Thank you, I'm Ann Craker. Thank you to the mayor and the council members. However, uh, I don't know, I, I think I missed my opportunity because tract C is this big and Des Moines is part of the larger Des Moines Creek West development. So if I keep my comments just to tract C, I lose, uh, everything else I was going to say. I can't be here on October eighteenth, I can send, uh, written, uh, testimony. Uh, and especially as I did that, uh, two and a half years ago to the Port of Seattle. Was that two and a half years ago? Well, however long it was, April or in March twenty-one. Um, and I, I, then I CC'd the rest of the members, but all those members are maybe not at this, uh, diet, at, um, what do you call your space? Yes, did I? But as far as, so just going to tract C, and if I look at it in the la- without getting onto all the other details, if we are not for development of industrial sprawl of Des Moines Creek West to continue what was already industrial sprawl of the, of the east, uh, portion or the other portion, uh, then this is the way to stop some of that development just from being rampant. And that's why I would ask, please postpone or even, uh, reject, uh, selling. Uh, we have much better ways to, uh, get, uh, more funding for our city than to give up, uh, the, the possibility of our green space. And I'll send you comments of the larger nature. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Okay, uh, is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak on this issue that would, wishes to speak? Okay, so, uh, I'm gonna take Lloyd first and, uh, and then come on up and introduce yourself, Lloyd, and...
Uh, thank you very much, members of the council, uh, city manager, city attorney, city clerk. Yes, I'd like to, um, build on what the other, uh, citizens were saying. Um, and, um, I know there's a little bit of confusion around Lot C and the development, but I would argue that Lot C is completely connected to the del- you can't separate them. It's like, um, separating the top part of a bottle from the bottom half. That, it's a direct, that's basically the driveway for the developer to move in. And so if that doesn't, sale doesn't go through, the developer has a big problem developing it. And so to say that this is, piece of property over here is not in the same, it doesn't have anything to do with it, is, would be, in my opinion, uh, not accurate. Um, it, it's, yeah, I mean, this developer's in California. The residents of this city can see that it has a direct effect on the development. So they filed the appeal for October eighteenth. They paid nine hundred dollars, pretty substantial sum, I would say, out of their own pocket. If you do do the sale tonight, you've essentially gone ahead with the, uh, integral, absolutely integral part of the development, one that could make or break it, essentially. And so you're essentially completely undercutting the citizens who filed the appeal. It, it's completely disingenuous to them. If anything, if you do vote for it tonight, they should, uh, at the most, get their refund, um, because you've, you've affected materially the case going forward. The ethical thing to do would be to not do anything here until the appeals process has been, has been completely settled, um, whether it's at the city or it goes to King County or something. I don't know, that, that's like the on-the-level approach. Hmm, I have heard that piece of property is like assessed at like under a hundred thousand, but the port's paying six hundred thousand for it. So that's kind of a, you can kind of see what's going on there. And it's kind of like saying, okay, this, here's a farm over here, and on another piece of property up here is a big lake that's public, and they want to drain that lake to help their farm, um, and we're, and, uh, the city's gonna buy the lake and then give it to somebody else who will give it to the farmer. And so, you know, it's not really, hmm, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, it's not legit. It's not something I would do, um, for a public organization, and especially after you've taken money for it. And on, on the other hand, it, uh, that place is, um, you know, it's one of our last wetlands, one of the last big green spaces. I say we keep it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. So someone else had her, come on up and introduce yourself. And where, and your city? Oh, wait a minute, um, so I'm sorry, the, you can come, you can be next. Okay, she, she had her hand up before.
Thank you, mayor and council member and audience. I'm Mary Fleck, and I'm from Seattle.
Mary?
Fleck, F-L-E-C-K. And I came here from Seattle because, uh, we are connected. And I believe that there are very serious questions that the port has to answer about what's going to happen with this property. And I don't believe that those important questions have been fully explored or fully answered. And as Lloyd mentioned, uh, it seems really disingenuous to go ahead with a sale that's the handle of the pot before you know what that pot's going to be used for. Now, um, the city attorney put up some slides that also raised some very big questions because they assumed that there was going to be development and assumed that there would be a road. But I believe that those assumptions are, really, uh, haven't been answered. I mean, those questions about what's going to happen haven't been answered, which raises the questions of motivation. Why is this being addressed now? Why is this little sliver so important to the council that it has to be sold off now before the citizens are heard on the very big issues? And I will be going back to Seattle and reporting to the port that they have questions that they have to answer to the people here, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Sorry, Mary, for jumping in front. Hey, everybody, my name is Jenny Russo. I have been a, a resident of Des Moines for about six years now. Um, uh, obviously, a lot of you guys know why I am here. I am asking for the pausing of the sale of tract C. Um, I'm asking that you guys wait until our hearing on October eighteenth. You know, let us have a chance. That's really what I'm asking. Why build a new parking lot is my question. Pretty recent, you guys built a parking lot across from that road that I know you're talking about. And it just doesn't make sense why you would sell it now after building such a nice parking lot, um, as well as why close it now when there's no alternative for us to get to the other trails? I use that pretty often to get to the waterfront, nice little jaunt in nature, you know? And you guys are gonna take that from us? So again, just asking that you guys wait until the hearing on the eighteenth. Pause this. Again, communication has been rough. We didn't hear about this until recently of this new track. So give us some time to get it out, um, as well as, I'll volunteer now to help keep it clean, so we don't sell it. You know, I will be out there every day I've had it, have to, cleaning up. And I'm asking again, please pause. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jenny. So is there anyone else who's, didn't sign up to speak who wishes to speak?
Hello, my name is Claire Parfit. I'm almost a twenty-year resident of Des Moines. I'm also a business owner. I'm a graphic designer and artist. In fact, um, some of my work is on some of the utility boxes around town. I'm a very avid, um, hiker, biker, skier, and I'm inspired by nature, and some of my art around town is inspired by some of the beauty that we have in Des Moines. So, uh, really, one of the highlights of living here is our waterfront and our green space, and, um, we talk about making Des Moines a, a livable city, attractive to residents, and even a destin- destination city. So the fact of this Lot C, uh, road, it just seems kind of like we're allowing the developer to have a gateway to get in to proceed with development. So if we're just voting on the road, yours is the first step to allow the developer the access for all the construction vehicles. So I agree with what every, everybody else has said, um, and also one issue that hasn't been addressed is, uh, economic and racial equity. Uh, there's been studies, many studies that have shown that, uh, people who are minorities and of lower income disproportionately live close to airports. So by, uh, allowing the Lot C road to be sold and the gateway to development, you're going to open up, um, creating more pollution, more, uh, health effects, adverse effects disproportionately for minorities and lower-income people who not everybody can afford to have a beautiful big house, you know, away from the air, uh, the flight path. Uh, in fact, uh, King County and the state says we must address, uh, economic equity and environmental justice for, uh, marginalized communities, um, and lower-income people. So I urge you to pause this sale of tract C as a first step. Thanks.
Thank you, Claire. Is there anyone else who didn't sign up to speak who wishes to speak? One more time. Is there anyone who didn't sign up to speak who wishes to speak? All right. So, council, now it's time... Oh, come on up. Thank you.
My name is John Core, resident. What are those? I just wonder, what are those horizontal lines within a tract? What, what are those? Do you understand what I'm asking?
It's, but we can't answer questions right now, but somebody's probably taking notes and may ask later. If you'll wait for a couple minutes, you might get your answer. Do you have anything else you'd like to say, John?
No, thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that's the last time. Uh, so what I'm gonna move now to is council questions. Council, do you have any questions? Please, questions only. Uh, I'll start with, just going down the round, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and Council Member Nutting, Council Member Mahoney, and then Council Member Harris. Thank you.
What are those horizontal, horizontal lines?
I, I don't know which horizontal lines you're talking about.
They, they, it looked to me to be a reference to the trail.
Oh, is, is it those that the mouse is on? I think those are parking spots.
And is there a trail also on this photo?
Yeah, the tr- the, everything that's shown up there does not currently exist. So you'll see the trail, there's gonna be a trail coming from the far east along the private drive, and that's also what the council is being asked to approve tonight is the easement. Um, that trail would extend along the private drive, and then it would kind of lie there, and it would connect, um, the two trails in Des Moines. And that would be completely, uh, developed by the Port of Seattle and Panatoni, and then the city would take control of that through the trail easement. Additionally, there is a trail that, it goes off the screen and then comes out in the neighborhood, um, and that would remain untouched as is.
Would the, um, if we did not agree to sell, would that prevent the development of this site in any way?
No. So in twenty-eighteen, the city council approved the development of a road on Lot C. So that ship has sailed. We have a written agreement with the Port of Seattle for a road where, where it shows it says Lot C, but we call it tract C. Um, so the question tonight is, does the city sell it and the port develops it and maintains it? Or does the city not sell it and the port just says, well, we have an agreement for the road, so we'll build it and the city maintains it?
If we don't sell it and the city maintains it, is there any opportunity for the city to make money on that road?
No.
Uh, Council Member Nutting.
Several questions here. So this is, uh, is this Lot C private drive that is being proposed tonight for sale, is that the only access to the agreed-upon business park that would be there?
No, there isn't access up two-sixteenth.
There's access to the... So there's access to the, what would that be, the south?
Yeah, I think you can kind of see it down there at the bottom, the southwest corner of that picture. So I'll just, I'll just remind the city council. So the city's comprehensive plan, which governs development, which tells the city staff, you know, these are the goals of the city. So the city council zoned this area a business park. The city council approved contracts to upgrade the roads. This started in the early 2000s. So the city council paid for the construction projects to upgrade these roads, but one of the items in the comprehensive plan was that the city council wanted to limit commercial deliveries coming off of 216. And so that was, that was part of the rationale why the city council approved the agreement in 2018, to provide a separate access so that we're not getting big, heavy trucks coming off of 216, they're coming out of these new roads that the city built and up to the airport as a freight access, essentially. So this is consistent with the, the comprehensive plan that the city council approves annually.
So just to reiterate, well, and the next question, would the, would the trail system, is the trail system part of the city? If, if the city did not sell the Track C or Lot C private drive, would we be on the hook for building the trail system that ultimately the port would build?
So the trail is separate. The, the trail is also a condition of the agreements that we have for the development. So the, the trail will be developed with the development if it is approved by the hearing examiner.
Okay, but the Lot C portion of it would be on the hook, we'd be on the hook as the city to build that with the road?
The developer would build it and then dedicate it to us as a public road. So either way, the developer is gonna pay for building the road on Lot C. And I'll just, I'll just address the question regarding the appeal hearing and whether or not that impacts this. So the environmental issues have nothing to do with this. Those will be, and that's what the subject of the appeal was. The appeal was whether or not the city followed SEPA and whether or not the application complies with state law. That has nothing to do with Track C. That will be in no way impacted by the city council's decision on this. In addition to that appeal, there's a consolidated hearing that addresses a variance request from the port as well as master plan approval. So in order to get master plan approval, they have to submit to the hearing examiner and say, this is the plan. And so they would like to be able to submit a plan that says this is a private road or this is a public road. And that's why we're asking the council to make that decision. The council decides not to sell the property, we'll alert the port, and they'll update their plan and say this is now a public road. So, but we need to know that before going to the hearing examiner. It doesn't affect the appeal, but it does affect the master plan because the, the hearing examiner needs to know that information.
Okay. And finally, what, what is the, what is the projected amount of trees or suggested amount of trees that are sizable on that property right now?
At Track C, there's zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Thank you, Mayor. If the hearing goes, if the hearing goes forward, as the hearing on October 18th, and then it's deemed that the project can't go forward, and we've made the agreement to sell this road, what happens?
The agreement would be voided.
Because of the contingency?
Yeah, so the sale of the property is contingent on a future development. They're not gonna, they, they're not gonna invest in a road to nowhere.
And what would, the funds from this, which, or the proceeds from this sale like this, which fund would they go into?
They would go into the general fund.
To the general fund. That's all I had, because everybody asked all the others. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
Thank you. Just, why does it say Lot C up there? Is there any material difference between Lot C and Track C?
No.
Okay.
Whoever made that graphic just put Lot C.
Well, yeah. So, yeah, good, good to know. So, let's see here. So here's the thing. Why do, there are two motions in the agenda item. Why do we need to approve the trail easement apart from the sale?
Why are we doing them separately?
Yeah, I mean, what legally, what, you know, yeah, what, what are, what is the legal distinction? I mean, so motion one is the sale of, of this property, and motion two is to approve a trail easement. What's the diff, difference?
That's exactly it. One is to sell the property, and then one is to accept the trail easement. But, so, rather than separate these and have two different agenda items, this is, it's the same project.
Yeah.
So we put them together.
I'm not being, I'm, I'm really not trying to be thick here. What is, why, if, if they pay us money and obtain the property, why do they, I mean, why is a trail easement necessary?
So these are the last two things. So we've, this is a project that's been going on, like I said, the ILA was 2018, but it goes well before that. It goes well before Michael. But, so these are the, these are the last two things that the city council needs to do.
No, no, I, I, I get that, and maybe, but if I buy a piece of property, I don't need an easement, right? I mean, what?
No, it's separate, so.
Right, but.
So you see that lots?
Who owns the trail?
The Port of Seattle owns the trail, and so they're giving us an easement to use the trail.
Okay, for, why do we need the easement if it's their thing? Is it simply because there will be a road there that?
The easement is for public use.
Okay.
So, so by, by getting the easement, we ensure that everyone in this room and everyone else can use the trail that's on the Port of Seattle property.
Thank you. That, that is what I was driving at. I should have not tried to be quite so clever. But, but in the alternatives, there are like three alternatives. Basically, we go for it, or we decline to purchase it. Can, can we just, for the purpose of this discussion, substitute purchase and surplus? I mean, we're, right? Or, or not? But, so we could decline to, we could decline to sell Track C, which is the first alternative. And then they, and then basically, you know, we would not get the money, it would be a public street. But we could also, the third alternative, not recommended, is decline to accept the trail easement. And I guess what I'm trying to get at is that I, having read the, the much lengthier agreement, it sounds like that would put us, us at some risk of violating a prior contract. Or is there, is there any risk to us in being, yeah?
Of declining to accept the trail easement?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be a bad decision, I think.
Well, other than bad, but I mean, in other words, does, you know, it, it reads to me as a layperson like they could sue us for being in breach of contract.
Well, they're trying to give us a trail easement so that the public can use it.
Yeah, but declining the trail easement essentially is the key to the whole thing. I mean, if, if there's no easement, then that, that really would put the, put the project at risk, or not.
No, they would just build it without the easement, without the trail, and then I guess you'd have to explain to the public why the trail doesn't connect.
Okay, and, all right, okay, I'm, I'm just trying to, yeah, if, if others have questions, I think, I think that's it. I sort of have to put this together in my mind. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the moment? I have a few. So, we've said, asked this question several times in many different ways, but I'm gonna ask it again. No matter what we do tonight, they get to build the road?
Yes.
Because we agreed to that a handful of years ago already.
Yes, we have an interlocal agreement that authorizes a road to be built in that location.
Okay, so no matter what we do tonight, that connector is available to this development if it goes through?
Yes.
That, that's already available to them?
Yes.
That was in the ILA, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Could you clarify why there was a parking lot on the other side, somebody asked him? Why is there a parking lot on the other side? Is it connected?
I, I don't know. Maybe, don't we have a parking lot to the south of the trail for people to park at?
I think it's adjacent to Barnes Creek Trail. Okay, so that was, thank you.
This one would be.
Yeah, I think that the question from the podium tonight had to do with the trail across 216th that's on the Barnes Creek Trail. So, developer, are you, you answered that one? You answered that one. Okay, could you clarify why the county assessor shows that the port owns this property, and why is it assessed at $20,000 with no taxes paid?
I cannot clarify why their website is wrong. I can confirm that we have a deed from the port giving us this property that was recorded with the county. When we were talking, I heard something about negotiations, and apparently the property is appraised for $20,000, and we're receiving $690,000 for it, so I think we're doing okay there. But that was actually, we got two appraisals on the property, so that's fair market value. As a part of, of transferring property between government agencies, we have to get appraisals. And so there's a appraisal from Kidder Matthews, and then we got a review appraisal using the appraiser, the appraiser that we use for a lot of our projects, and both of those came back at the same price.
Okay, and can you talk about why that might be, what, why, why it would be such a high value for a small piece of road?
Just looking at the highest and best use, that's the, the method that appraisers use.
That's all of my questions for clarity for now. Any other questions across the dais? All right. Gonna close the, I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to enact draft ordinance number 24-030, declaring surplus to the city needs Track C located within the Des Moines Creek Business Park West, and authorize the city manager to execute the documents necessary for the sale of the property to the Port of Seattle for fair market value.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Mahoney has a second? And we're gonna have a second, the discussion involved in this, and then the second motion after that. Okay, so discussion for this subject, Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to set aside 10% of that sale price for environmental mitigation. We had talked about specifically the SAMP. We currently have no legal funds set aside, and the public should understand if the sale does not go through, then, you know, we're out nothing. But if it does happen, then we should at least allocate a portion of these proceeds towards dealing with the impacts of Sea-Tac Airport and the Port of Seattle.
So, Councilmember Harris, just for clarity, are you making a motion, when you talk about environmental mitigation, are you gonna narrow that to SAMP? Because, or do you, or you, do you mean like, you could do any, you could plant trees with it? What you're saying is you want?
No, specifically, we have the upcoming negotiations with the Port of Seattle over the SAMP, and the mitigation opportunities are much greater than tree replacements and so forth. And, but, you know, you have to hire an environmental lawyer to do that kind of work, so that is the highest and best use of that money.
This is.
10%.
Yeah, I will second that.
Thank you.
So, we're going.
Does one just give us two motions on the board?
Well, you have a subsidiary motion, so you, you, we decide if we want to take some of that money if it passes. So we decide this first, and then we go to the primary motion after that.
If I could just add, I, I just maybe provide some context to this. So the port is coming out with the SAMP. We have set aside some funds for our aviation consultants. I do think that it would not be a, a bad idea to have some legal assistance on this moving forward, and, and I've talked to our finance director today about using some of existing professional services from the legal department that we have, that we haven't spent for this year. And I think that, you know, between now and mid-year next year, I think we could come up with $65,000, which is what Councilmember Harris is asking for. So I think, you know, the council could certainly vote on that. I don't think this really needs to be a, a debated issue, because I think that we can, we, we actually, administration would like to put those funds together to get some assistance to review the SAMP and have some responses. So I'll just leave it at that, that I think administratively, we can put that together. If the council would like to debate it, they can.
Well.
So, motion, seconded, any discussion?
Well, if, if, if I may, you know, since one of the items on the agenda tonight was to dedicate money to a particular purpose, so I just want to make sure that in all the cutting and so forth, that there is that money set aside. You know, no, no offense, I just want to make sure that there's that block that's set aside for that purpose. So if, if the money's gonna be there already, then I don't see why there's any, it would make any difference in voting for this. Right?
Yeah, I was just trying to expedite.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I get it, but hopefully, you know, hopefully there is, I have a second from the mayor, hopefully there are two other votes.
Okay. Any discussion? Councilmember Mahoney?
You know, with a levy out there being one of the biggest pieces, I'm not in favor of this. I want the $690,000 to go to our general fund. We can figure out and disperse it later, but there's going to be other cuts and so forth. And I think we need, I don't want to dedicate any kind of funds at this time for any purpose until we know more and we're further into the budget process, so I don't think it makes sense at this point. So I won't be supporting it.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm concerned that the SAMP is coming down the road. I think that there's going to be a lot of opportunities, and I would like some other professional people to do a lot of the research instead of me. And I think that our council is gonna be exposed to a lot of possible, possibly public scrutiny during that time. And I feel like in order to be effective moving through that, to have a, an educated, legal, public voice moving forward, what can you do, what can you not do? I don't want to put any of my energy into something that is either just, you know, spinning my wheels, right? So I've, I, I would like to know that there's some dedicated funds out there to see if we can help with either contracting a legal voice or whatever, bring education to us while we move through this next segment. And it's very short coming up here, so anyway, that's why I'm in favor of this. Any more comments or questions? Okay, all in favor of using 10% of the $690,000 to allocate to SAMP mitigation issues? That, I would say? All in favor, raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Mott, Councilmember Harris, and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Mahoney. That passes five to two. All right. So where are we next? Now, we are still on the original motion, number one, move to enact the draft ordinance declaring surplus. We are still on the discussion. If you want to open it for discussion, any discussion points on that? Councilmember Oxiger?
I just want a clarification of what I thought I heard earlier. So the sale of this is contingent upon the project going through. So if, if this does not go, if the, the environmental hearing produces a result that this, you know, this development is not gonna go through, we don't get the $690,000, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Mahoney?
I'm going to support this motion. First of all, 690,000 is better than nothing. It's going to happen anyway, and a lot of people, where I understand about the trees and the nature and so forth, one of the problems been here, and we've got a lot of our law enforcement in the background, they can attest this is a problematic area, and a lot of people have come to me that this area is a little unsafe. This ensures and helps us with our safety. I, I just, and again, we have a contingency on it, so it makes sense to me to go ahead at this point. And I love, and I'm just going to add, thank you for your comments today. The hearing is where I think most of those words need to be heard, and that will be the, and that's where the change can occur. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Harris?
Just, you know, when, the, the hearing was supposed to be confined to Track C and we found out immediately that that is impossible. Both the city and the public are, you know, are understandably confused because they're, it's, it's all one big thing. Don't misunderstand, you know, my amendment as being thrilled about this stuff, but this is an agreement that goes back to 2012 and before that to 2003. And the best thing we can do going forward, I've said it before and say it again, is reinstate the planning commission. Ironically, it was the one thing that was removed during the all options on the table meeting in like 2012 or something, and you just need some venue for the public every month to see what the long-term vision is. I'm only harping on this because the city, I feel bad, I feel, not bad, a certain empathy for the developer because a developer above all things insists on certitude, you know, and they thought that they, for the last 15 years, that this was done. They are understandably, I'm sure, surprised. It's only the public that feels blindsided about it. And the best thing we can do, as a lesson's learned, regardless of how the SEPA hearing goes, is to make sure that every project going forward is easily understandable by the public, not only on a website, but where you have a place you can go every month and engage on that vision. It's, it, it's only a surprise to the public because it wasn't something that was brought forward routinely, because it didn't need to be in our framework. So I would just say to the public, just keep thinking about that planning commission. It sounds really boring, but it's one of the most important process changes we could make. Thank you.
Thank you. So I do have a couple of comments. I want, I do want to say we did receive quite a bit of communication on this, but I would just say that the most, the most effective way to communicate with us meaningfully is to think about it a little, put something personal in there. So just a little chuckle, I did receive something from a guy in Dorking, UK, and at the bottom of his communication, in parentheses, it said, "And don't forget to put your name", meaning he just did a click and paste and he forgot to eliminate that instruction. And so it was a little bit of a chuckle, but, but this is an important issue to a bunch of citizens, so I, I, I did respond to just about everybody who wrote to me until this morning, and, and I did click and paste, honestly, in my own template response. Unless somebody wrote to me personally, then I put a personal note in there to them, whether I knew them or not. So I appreciate the, the personal thought. I just want to reiterate the dispositions, disposition of this road, no matter who owns it, it's not going to be considered by the hearing examiner. So it won't matter who owns it, there's going to be a road there. The ILA that we transmitted insured that. If it goes forward and we own it, even, and the developer builds it, our taxpayers will pay to maintain a road for the benefit of a developer. So I don't think that would go down in history in the future very well. So, and then also about a plan, that does keep coming up. I do want to, I do want to bring forward, we don't have a strategic plan that says strategic plan, but we do have a comprehensive plan, a transportation improvement plan, a capital improvement plan, a parks, rec and senior services master plan, a marina master plan. Now, we may not agree that all of them are either as complete or beautiful, wonderful, or even up to date as we think that they should be, but we have a lot of plans, and all of those subsidiary plans feed into the comp plan, which we are working on very hard right now. So I do want to say, it's not like our, our city just wanders around and, and responds to every light out of heaven. We do have several plans, and, and our staff and our council, we are working to comply with those plans and then change them when we disagree with them. So it's not as fast as some people like, but we have them. Okay, I think I'm going to take it to a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. It looks like it's a seven zero. Thank you very much. Motion number two, do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve the trail easement from the Port of Seattle over the Des Moines Creek Business Park West property and authorize the city manager to sign the easement substantially in the form as attached.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Mahoney gets the second. Any discussion? Councilmember Mahoney and then Councilmember Harris.
This, this, we get the trail we really need there, that's going to provide the safety, give the sightlines for our law enforcement. It makes it safer, more people will use it, it's going to be family friendly, it's a great addition to our community and particularly connecting Des Moines Creek Trail to the Barnes Creek Trail, which we have great plans for both of those being useful corridors in biking and walking and family, family events. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
So you may have heard during the discussion, you know, everything does go back to the airport and the Des Moines Creek Business Park, it, it is, one of the things that it does that the port likes is that it helps them with their logistics, with cargo flights, with enabling more operations. And I just want people to know there's a, a great game that's been going on for a long time, and as far as what happens on the 18th, I know the thing with previous airport expansions is that they've been all or nothing, like, you know, we're going to stop the third runway and if we can't, then, you know, we just give up. I just want to encourage people that, you know, fight for what you want regarding the SEPA hearing, but regardless of how that goes, that is not the end. These projects take years to resolve themselves, and I keep talking about a planning commission because there will be many, many more votes about every aspect of the building, from pouring the foundation to the trees and parking and so forth, and if you live in the area, you know, you have a stake in it, and so don't think of this as all or nothing. Think of it as something that evolves and there will be lots of decisions and chances for you to improve the process over time. Just, you know, don't think of it as just, that's it on the 18th, or tonight. Keep at it. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? I do have one clarity question. When we're approving the easement, is it the entire Y? Are we just proving the easement on Lot C?
It's the entire Y.
All right, thank you. With no further discussion, I'm going to take it to a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like we have a seven zero. Thank you very much. Next up, we have new business, and the first item is a resolution in support of Proposition One, the Public Safety Levy-Lid Lift, and I'm going to turn that over to Finance Director Jeff Friend.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Council, members of the public. I'm Jeff Friend, Finance Director. Presentation tonight is on the resolution to support Proposition One. We'll have a little background on Proposition One, discussion of the status quo, and then the choice facing the public in November. So a little background, Proposition One is a public safety property tax levy lid lift. The lift is a reference to raising the 1% cap on property tax revenue growth that is capped annually. So a proposition to lift the 1% cap on the City of Des Moines property tax levy for 2025. The ballot measure seeks to increase the property tax rate for the City of Des Moines to no more than $1.40 per thousand of annual assessed valuation, and this was on the ballot in August. The measure failed on, in the August 6th primary election. So on August 7th, the Water and Land Blog had an article about the ballot measure failing, and in that article had the sentence, "The rejection of the proposition reflects the community's decision to maintain the status quo", which, when I saw this, I was disheartened because the status quo is simply not an option. So we'll take a look at what the status quo is. So status quo is a revenue that remains flat from year to year in general, while costs have increased 22% in four years due to post-COVID inflation, which has resulted in the initial 2025 budget deficit of about $4.5 million. If you want to see it in visual terms. This inflation is the red arrow and cities is that poor guy right there. So without, aside from inflation, you know, we're working on the budget right now and we're assuming that we won't have additional funds, and so the result of that would be shrinkflation. So this graphic explains what shrinkflation is. I'm sure we're probably all pretty familiar with it. The carton of milk on the left is 1,000 milliliters, it costs $2. Shrinkflation means you still pay $2 for milk, only you get 750 milliliters, so you're paying the same price, but what you get is less than what you got before. So the choice that voters have in November is really the choice of what city of Des Moines they would like to have or prefer. So at 90 cents per thousand, which is the current rate for property tax, would be, lead to a smaller Des Moines. So smaller Des Moines would be characterized by budget cuts for police, court and various city departments. It would mean fewer police officers, limited traffic enforcement resources, no Redondo substation, no mental health crisis response, no crime analysts to assist detectives, the detectives would have to take on the work themselves, no animal control, reduced patrol staffing levels at night, and reduced training and equipment for officers. If the levy lid lift would pass and Des Moines residents paid a higher property tax rate, which would be a 50 cent increase, or as the ballot measure says, it says not to exceed $1.40, but at $1.40, it would be $3.5 million of additional funding for public safety. It would mean more police officers, be an enhanced neighborhood and school traffic enforcement. We would maintain current level of community presence, continued mental health crisis response, more resources to assist officers and detectives, dedicated animal control, maintain current staffing levels at night, increase police effectiveness and efficiency, and enhance code enforcement with an additional code enforcement officer. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. So you have questions before the motion? Councilmember Harris?
Jeff, just approximately, what is our current police budget for 2024 in round? If I said 14 million, would that be?
I think that's it. That would be in the ball.
In the, okay, good, okay, thank you.
Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion? I'll leave that to Councilmember Nutting.
I move to adopt draft resolution number 24-060 in support of the City of Des Moines Proposition One, Public Safety Levy-Lid Lift on November 5th, 2024 election ballot.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Mahoney has a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Mahoney?
Yeah. Thank you, Jeff. You know, you did a good job of describing the, the inflation, again, over the last four years, plus 20% increase in cost and less than 4% increase in revenue. It's just not feasible, we can operate. Being a military guy, how many veterans we have in the room, right? One of the things you never do is call an airstrike on yourself. And honestly, not supporting this tonight, your council would be calling an airstrike on its own community. We created the levy and a lot of us were driving it because we saw the increase in crime, and when we got the ARPA money, we saw, we saw some other issues where we needed to add some officers, we needed somebody that, getting people services, handling, handling homeless a new way, all of these creative things, but it was unsustainable and we knew that, with the idea that maybe the economy rebound and so forth. But since then, state policy and the court system, quite honestly, and I'm talking the, at the superior court level, have failed us frankly. You see it every day, no justice, you're seeing the gun, gun, gun violence and some of the violent stuff, but it's never been harder for policemen to do their jobs. And we want to make sure that public safety is, is, is a, is a primary issue. I talk to people all the time and public safety is one of their primary concerns, and I, what happens is your values and your property could go down as a subsequent. I want to talk about when you make your decision and you vote, look at these faces of employees, officers and so forth, because when we go to the budget cuts, should this not pass, we'll have a level of furloughs that they were back when it was tough times, and Vic remembers that and how sick you were about that, and I know Jeremy, I think you would experience that. Look at how we handle the homeless and so forth like that. We found new ways that have been successful. Every officer will testify that that service has been instrumental and taken them, been allowed the officers to do more jobs. A lot of people in different communities, they want the police presence. Well, you're, if you vote no, you're calling an airstrike on your community. You know, that's, these are part of the things. It's, there's been some allegations that funds have been mismanaged or misspent and stuff, and that's not true. It's simply this gap in inflation and the, and the public safety crisis that every community's feeling right now. And you just heard from Bobby Joe about, you know, her, her, her operation. Honestly, when, these are subsequent things if this levy doesn't pass, where we really got to consider, can we give these organizations money? And what that would mean to them and the impact? She just showed what that would do. And all of these are other options, I mean, all of these are options that we have to look at and we have to make cuts. This is one of the reasons why I was opposed to holding 10% of the money. We've got some serious issues already. To dedicate funds to something already, when we've got a bigger picture to look at, is problematic. So it's important that this council be unified because this is the answer for the next couple years. Yes, there are things where we can generate revenue and we can develop and things like that, those are long processes. Hell, it took us 40 years to get the damn steps in the marina done, right? So those take time and they come with process, and they, and you want to leave a desirable community that people want to invest in. We need development downtown on our PAC Highway, but if we're a shooting range, who's going to invest here, right? Public safety is important. We need to, we not only maintain the officers we added during ARPA, but adding extra officers ensures our safety. The other thing I'm going to say is what does this say to our police? If we don't support this, we're basically telling the police they're not important. There's 50,000 and $40,000 bonuses to transition over to another force. What does that say? What happens when we lose the people that know the community because they got a better opportunity, or they want to move to a community that quite frankly supports them? To not support this is just wrong. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
Jeff, since you're vaguely in the area, could you answer one more question for me? I'm sorry. When you define, when, when you talk about inflation being 20%, can you sort of be a little more specific as to what category of expenses? can you sort of be a little more specific as to what category of expenses? Or is that just across the board, or?
That's based on the Consumer Price Index for urban consumers in Seattle. So that would be, the 24% increase would be from June of 2020 to June of 2024. So what cost the dollar in 2020? Cost $1.24.
Okay.
June of this year. So it covers all consumer goods for.
Okay, that's federal CPI, okay. Thank you. I guess my comment is, so all council members are taught to basically direct all of their comments regarding the functioning of the city through the city manager. But since this is a public meeting, I will say that I object to that presentation. I objected to the police chief's op-ed in the Waterland Blog. They were, these are both op-eds. And I would much prefer it if the city, when it goes to the podium, confines itself to just basically the facts and figures. And I understand the desire to sell. But we have to be, if we're going to do our job, we have to be able to be dispassionate. Imagine if a civil engineer were, you know, commenting on, you know, how they personally felt about a particular building project. It puts all of us in an awkward position, who are trying to make decisions about the future. And again, I wish we could just keep things to the numbers. And, because it just creates this implication that, you know, some of us care more about this stuff than others, and that is simply not true. I would never suggest that any of my colleagues, regardless of how they vote, have any more or less of an interest in the health and safety of our residents. And thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, and then Councilmember Nutting.
Yeah, I think this is important. I think most people know how I would, that I am in support of this resolution, because it's what I constantly hear. People want more public safety. And just from a purely numbers rational standpoint, when you have that kind of inflation in your costs, you simply don't have the money to do it, and that's driving a budget deficit. And if you want more of something, which is what I hear, we want more police officers, you have to pay for it. Now, as was explained earlier, your actual bill may not go up, because there's 50 cents left sitting on the table that the fire department is giving up, that was there for public safety, for the fire, that now can be used for public safety for the police. And it's a fairly straightforward thing to do. You know, and those are just facts and figures. I think it's important to listen to what people want, and I think it's important to try to provide, as members of this council, what people are saying that they want. I don't see any other alternative. We currently have a staffing level of police officers per thousand, which is the metric that is used across the country, that is below the state average. This levy lid lift would simply allow us to get to the state average. It's not going to put us above it. It means we'll be average in what we do. I mean, it's really, when you think about it, we have a police force that is staffed below average, but is providing pretty good service. But they need more, if they're going to continue to do the job that they're doing. I hope that my colleagues can see that there simply is no other alternative. We can't wipe out the whole budget of the city and just put it entirely to the police force. Everything across the board is going to take some cuts, because cities do lots of different things. And we need to fund all of those things. Some of them are mandated from the state, some of them are mandated by the public. Public safety is one of those things that I hear the public wants, and this is the way that we can do that. So I hope that everybody will join me in support of this resolution, in support of Proposition 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nutting, and then your second time Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much more to add to Councilmember Mahoney and Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. What I do want to speak to is response times. And I had the unfortunate happenstance earlier this week near my project where I witnessed a horrific accident where a young woman had to be removed from her car by the jaws of life. They had to take the entire roof off the car and the rear driver's side door to get her out of the car. As far as I know, she was okay, but an officer could not respond until six hours later to take the witness's deposition. And his excuse was, he was the only person on the beat that day. There are cities that aren't responding to alarm calls because of understaffing and the inability to fund their police department. They don't respond to alarm calls unless there's just cause, which means they have to have a video of the perpetrator to respond to that alarm call. So they're not, you'll have officers not responding to alarm calls now. Not supporting this measure takes our officers off the street. And, yes, things have to be looked at as systemic in the city, changes in codes for PAC Highway and the downtown for development. But people in the business know that development could take up to four years. Once a code is changed in conception into draft plans that go into the city for construction and approval of those plans and the SEPA and all the other stuff that goes into it, we won't see development for three to four years. So this is, with inflation rising 22%, and our revenue is only going up four, I don't see not supporting this. And as I look through the courtroom here, I see a lot of friends that I've had the opportunity to hang out with, and I don't want to see them go anywhere, so. And it's the right thing for the city, so I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Other comments? Comments? Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. So in a prior presentation, it was noted that other cities had approved a public safety levy, and I did a little checking, and those votes were 7-0. And I point that out, because if we had achieved consensus, I would be more amenable to supporting this resolution. Nothing has changed from August. I would just, we have a fundamental disagreement as to the root cause of how we got to where we are. Some of my colleagues will say, you know, COVID and inflation, and I would say that we headed down a path decades ago that has put us in this ongoing cycle. Other cities, not all cities, have the issues that we have. Not all cities go through these cycles like we do. And it is my desire that we break that cycle and get on a different path. And I will just note that the finance director, pardon me, you know, we've made a lot of progress and will, before the end of the year, make more. We've made more progress in a lot of areas of budget discipline than at any time since I've been watching these meetings, and that goes back to 2008. Truly necessity is the mother of invention. And I am, I struggle to believe that we would have made the progress we're making now without that pressure. And I believe we'll get through this, but one other thing regarding the last levy lid lift that I noticed, you set aside a dedicated fund, okay? Finance director said the public safety budget is 14 million. And so you set aside a dedicated fund for three. Great, so now you've got 11 million, okay? That doesn't mean you're automatically going to keep that 11 million, you know? It just means that you've sequestered 3 million. That's great. That doesn't guarantee that you're going to maintain, let alone increase, these public safety services. It just means you set aside three. Three is nice, but three is not 14. It's the other 11 that the council will have to deal with. And nothing to do with the public safety lid lift guarantees any of that. So regardless of the ordinance, it's symbolic. We, it will be nice to have the money, for sure, you know, if the voters approve it. But I believe that there will be far better gains to be had by the city focusing its attention on developing new revenue sources. And the sooner we get on with it, the better. What I reject is the notion that this is as good as it gets. It's not. Thank you.
I'll give it, Councilmember Oxiger, and then Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Thank you, Mayor. We are by and large a representative democracy. The public elects us to make a lot of the decisions, but they do retain the ability to make direct comment themselves. And that was the levy lid lift that was on the August 3 ballot. I'm hard of hearing, but I heard rather loudly that the citizens don't trust this council. I only heard, I only heard one person say that they had a problem with the police. So it's not the police that, you know, this is the problem. It's us. And they have spoken loudly, saying, you better go back and you better fix this thing. And, you know, check your priorities and put this thing in order. In a sense, what this is, is this is tough love. Because we've had this problem basically on a four-year cycle since the year 2000. We had a huge deficit because of the initiative 695. And we keep doing Band-Aids. We keep patching it a little bit more. We thought, okay, we'll dump the pool. That's going to save some money there. Voters didn't like that. They funded it anyway. Then we came back, and we did a six-year levy, temporary levy, in order to fund the police. That went away. So then we finally figured out that, okay, well, we need to put in a utility tax franchise fee situation. That would, that brought us back another, about another four years to 2000. We were basically in the same problem again in 2000. COVID, as horrible as it was, and everything actually proved, you know, a little bit of a lifeline to us, because we got $9.2 million in ARPA funds. So we've been living on 9.2 million worth of ARPA funds. It's four years later now, and we got a problem again. And if you look at the projections for the budget going out, we're still going to have the problems. We need to fix the structural manner in which we do these things. I heard the public. The public, I literally only heard one person tell me that they had any problem with the police. It's with us. We need to fix this, and we need to fix it structurally. So I will be voting no.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I want to go back to some of the comments that were made earlier in the public comment to try to address some of those. And one of them relates to the structural problem that we have, and that is, that 1% increase that we are allowed by law to make every year is 1% of the total property tax that we get in from the city. So even if we were to do revenue-producing, theoretically revenue-producing things like build high-rises and hotels everywhere, and the property values go up, the city can still only go up 1% more from what it was last year. And what that means then is that the excess value in the property taxes gets diffused out and drives down the rate that everybody's paying, which most people think is a pretty good idea. And so it's attractive. But because of the way state law is written, we don't have the ability to simply raise the property taxes back up to where they were. I mean, what we're asking for, what the levy lid lift would do would raise it to approximately $1.40 per $1,000 of assessed value. That's what it was back in, I think, 2017. But as the inflation of land value has happened, that then, and we haven't kept up with that, because we can only raise it 1% at a time, that diffuses out, and it pushes down to approximately 90 cents per thousand of assessed value, which is what most people are paying now. That's how, that's the structural problem that we have no control over whatsoever. So Jim, I don't know if you're still here. I don't think so. If you're watching on TV, I hope that helps explain the 1% issue that we face. The only other big piece, and this has been shown in the budget stuff, that we can affect is sales taxes. And we don't want to raise those a whole lot, because that's a very regressive tax that hurts everybody who purchases anything, and it's a bigger chunk of poor people's money than it is of rich people's money. So that's not a really good way to raise the revenue that we have coming in. The only thing we can try to do is create more opportunities for sales. But ultimately, those opportunities rely on businesses coming into Des Moines. And at this point, they simply haven't come in. We have looked at a lot of other options, what to do. You know, the option that often gets thrown out is contracting with the sheriff's office to provide police services. And Chief Bo, I'm not going to put you right on the spot, but there was a reason he was willing to come over here and leave the sheriff's office. That is not necessarily a great way to provide local control of your police department to provide what people want. And it's not any less expensive. The dollar figures are minute in any differences for that. The only other things that we can do is try to pay people less to be police officers, not give people raises, in which case, that $50,000 or $40,000 bonus, transfer bonuses, you know, start looking really good, and we're losing our police officers, who know our police force. You know, we can try to gut various city services, but everybody seems to like a lot of the city services. We could sell off pieces of city property, but that's only one-time revenue. That doesn't solve any of the long-term stuff. And people would get really upset if we sold off Marina, the beach park, something like that. And that's just not, not an. So I hope that helps to clarify why we're in such a conundrum here, to try to do this. But we need your help. And I hope that the public will support. If we didn't make it clear enough the first time, we're going to make it as absolutely clear as we can in November. We can't balance this budget in a way that will be acceptable to the public, given what we hear about the want for public safety without, unless this passes. And what that will do is there will still be cuts, but it will insulate the police department and the courts and the jail, which are all part of the same stream, from those cuts, so that we can focus on other services and try to do that. But there are going to be cuts. The question is, how much and what part of city services are going to be affected? And if you want to insulate. And if you want to insulate public safety from that, that's what's going to happen. Because this is a short-term problem we have to deal with. We have to have a budget for the next year. There is no putting it off. There is no, let's do something else. Let's try something else now. We've been trying to do things all along. We're just, we haven't done it yet. We haven't succeeded. And this is what we have to do because this is where the budget is at today. And you have to deal with what's in front of you today, not with what should be down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. So Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. I made quite a few phone calls this week to talk to constituents about their votes, their feelings about the levy lid lift. And I will reiterate what I heard earlier, that this is absolutely not a referendum on the police. It is absolutely not a show of lack of support for our police. In fact, I heard quite great things about our police department. What I did hear was ongoing distrust and anger about the way that this council has budgeted over the last 15 years. And when we had presentations from Mr. Friend about whether we should do a permanent lid lift or a temporary one, he described something that's like a fiscal cliff, right? It looks like this. If you create some temporary funding, then you get to the end of the temporary funding and it just stops. And everything just drops because the end of the money has come and there is no money after that. That is essentially what this council did with the ARPA funds by using ARPA one-time money to pay for ongoing essential needs. We created that cliff. And unfortunately, the city could have used ARPA funds to fund other positions in the city. They could have had a full-time ferry consultant. They could have spent three other FTEs on some other project, but they decided to use it towards the police, putting our police force in the middle of an unsustainable position, which we knew was coming to an end. And I know for a fact that citizens and residents of Des Moines asked, pleaded, said things three years ago, pleading with the council not to use temporary funding to fund ongoing needs, and it was unheard. And I think we're being told again, don't do it. What message will it take in order to have change in the behavior and the fiscal discipline of the city? And I had a really good conversation and someone asked me, do you think the citizens are really willing to not fund something that is essential to get back at the city? And I think the answer is yes. Not only because of some of that message that isn't being heard over and over and over again, but because folks are in a precarious position themselves, that more taxes to them feels like too much of an ask, that this particular proposal was too aggressive. It didn't just replace the one-time money funds that we came up with to get the four positions, but actually asked for an additional four. It pains me so much to say that I am not going to support this proposal. But I offer to anyone who's listening and to anyone who'd like to have a conversation about it, the individual voters educate themselves about what makes sense, what makes sense for them in their vote. Because I'm only one person, but it really is in the hands of the voters to approve or disapprove this levy lid lift. Thank you.
Okay, we have, thank you, Councilmember. We do have one more issue to vote on tonight and we need to get through this. So you have a, go ahead. Go ahead.
I just have to make a comment on the ARPA money. That just simply isn't true. I'll grant you that. We knew we needed to add some officers because there was a need to it with the hope that we could have, you know, revenue later and support those positions. But we all knew that when we decided it. But it was a very detailed list where we helped so many people. We helped, we helped charities. We, we subsidized parks and recreation. We saved our businesses from COVID and a boil order that they, that, that happened, that we did. We did so many good things in the community and we put it toward projects and everything else. To say that we did it irresponsibly, or it could have been done better, there was a whole process on it. It was well-spent. And to say something like that was, is just irresponsible. So I have to call that out.
All right. So discussion is over. I guess I only, I, I think that about the trust issue, we're, we acted strongly tonight to, you know, to try and overcome that trust issue with one, one decision tonight. We're working toward it. It's all we can do, we just keep moving forward. So I'm going to take a vote right now. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Mahoney and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsui and Councilmember Harris. So it passes four to three. Thank you very much. All right. The next item is the adoption of the 2025 to 2030 Capital Improvements Plan. I'm going to give this to Jeff Friend and he's only allowed one sentence. Well, we, we got to get through this, so.
What point four should we extend?
Um, I think if there is, if, if we have discussion, I will extend. So how long do you think this is going to take to present, Jeff?
I'd say 10 minutes.
Okay, then we do need to extend. Okay, so let's close the door for doors for a moment there. Do I have a motion to extend? Councilmember Nutting?
I, I motion to extend to 10 minutes after nine o'clock with the council meeting ending at that point.
With no council comments.
With no council comments, no presiding officers, no items for the next business or new business or anything. After this presentation, council meeting's over. At 10, at 10 minutes after nine o'clock.
Do I have a second? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for a second, all in favor. It looks like, oh, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Grace Matsui, Councilmember Mahoney and myself, all opposed. Councilmember Harris, it passes six one. Okay, Jeff, go ahead.
Hey, this is a presentation for the 2025-2030 Capital Improvements Plan. So it's an odd transition from the last presentation to this one. The last presentation concerned the general fund, which is operations. The general fund does not pay for these capital improvements. These are not, these are capital, non-operating, so there's, there's no overlap. So I just want to clarify that for the public before we move forward, in case there's confusion as to why in one minute we don't have money, the next minute we do. And also when we had public comments, there was a question that was asked, and I realized that should have been the first slide, is what is a capital project? Capital project is an investment in buildings, land and equipment that is greater than $25,000 and has a useful life of over five years. The capital improvement plan in its totality is in the packet. This is just going to be a brief overview and I'm going as quickly as I can. This slide shows the different kinds of projects that the city has in the capital improvement plan. We have transportation projects, municipal capital improvements, Marina capital improvements, surface water management capital and building facility projects for a total of 83 projects. The total scope of all these projects is about $167 million, but as the schedule shows, that's not all, 160 million does not exist in its totality from 25 to 2030. That also includes what's already been spent on these projects last year and before. It includes funding for this year, which as you can see is a little over 28 million. And then from 25 through 2030 is about 102 million. Funding overview, there are different funding sources for these projects. As you can see, we have non-capital funds, franchise fees, debt proceeds. You can see is the bonds that have been issued and prior bonds as well. So that you can see is a large number in the 23 and prior column. It's about 27,658. These numbers are presented in thousands. We have one-time tax money, which we'll get to in the next slide, traffic impact fees, grants. And there's, for the Marina projects, the Marina can also use some of its own funds, which is, that's what Marina rates is there. So again, the total capital budget is almost 167 million. And 75 million is from 2025 to 2030, 26 million this year. And then of course, 65 million last year and before. One-time tax money, of course, as I think this has been alluded to already this evening. We're in the budget process now and this time of year, usually there's discussion over whether or not to retain one-time sales tax in the general fund. One-time sales tax and BNO tax comes from construction projects that are valued at $15 million or more that are taking place in the city. On some years, council elects to retain those funds in the general fund. When they do not elect to do that, then those funds are transferred from the general fund to a capital project fund that's labeled one-time tax. Because in the code, it designates these funds from these one-time construction projects to go towards capital projects in the city. So what this schedule shows is what that would look like in the, for 2025 and 2026. The first column shows with that contribution. So if the general fund does send out the estimated amount, and we're estimating about 275,000, we have some projects coming up in the city. Hopefully that will support that number. So if the general fund does contribute the one-time tax, the ending balance of the one-time tax fund in the capital projects fund would be nearly 1.3 million. At the end of 2026, it would be a little over 1.5 million. If council elects later this year to actually withhold that money and keep it in the general fund, the ending balance of the one tax, one-time tax fund in 2025 would be a little over 1 million. And then in 2026, estimated to be just under 1 million, about 963,000. So this is here just to display for those interested, what it would look like with that contribution and what that fund would look like if it was held in the general fund. And there we go. So of all the projects in the plan, 21 of them are closing this year. The most significant one, of course, is the North Bulkhead. That might be surprising to hear that that's closing now, but that's, you know, on the books. It's been billed out. It closes this year. We have court security improvements, public security, or police security improvements. And the list goes on. And Barnes Creek Trail and the North Fork McSorley Creek Diversion, those are two of the more larger ones, totaling almost $23 million. So these projects would be closing this year. And this is the suggested motion.
Thank you. Any questions before the motion? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Hopefully this is a quick question. On the second page of your, on the presentation, the funding overview, is that a fairly decent list of the restricted funds that are out there or are there others?
No, I'd say that's a pretty exhaustive list.
That's a pretty good list? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have a motion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to adopt draft resolution number 24-081 approving the City of Des Moines 2025-2023 Capital Improvements Plan.
Second.
Yep. It doesn't matter.
Did I read something wrong?
It's close enough, 2030, right?
Did I say 2030?
I'm sorry, I'll reread it. I move to adopt draft resolution number 24-081 approving the City of Des Moines 2025 to 2030 Capital Improvements Plan.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Mahoney, for a second, any questions or discussion? Councilmember Mahoney.
Quick discussion. A lot of the, all the items have been, I'm amazed at what we're getting done over the last several years and compliments to staff on that. But every, every committee works a section of these independent and they come together. These have been scrutinized year after year after year. They're legitimate projects. They're, they should, they put them on the books. They show where we need the funding. They're part of the requirement to get grants and other things, so they really bring a value. And I think you did an excellent job and I know it's a team effort, not just, Jeff might be doing the presenting, but from, from Tim George down to the, to the guy mowing the lawn in the park, they, everybody's put an effort to it and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well said. Councilmember Harris.
Public Planning Commission. The notion that we're going through all of these things in 14 minutes. I'm just saying this is why when you look at the Des Moines Creek Business Park, the trust issue that people have with that, it extends over into policing. It extends into every area of government. And if I were a member of the staff or whatever, it would be like, of course, you're doing, you're all doing a great job and everything, but you don't understand the public's perspective on going through all of this stuff in 14 minutes. I'm just saying that's really the thing. So thank you very much. These are all really, there's, there's a lot of great projects here.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, Jeff, I appreciate everything that's gone on in this. And I, and I don't know that the public really appreciates how much work has gone into this through the committee meetings. Every committee has a piece of this and there have been presentations and discussions and a back and forth with the staff to do that. It is impossible, heck, it's impossible for all of us to keep up on everything that's going on, on this list. But I can assure you, they've been worked thoroughly by the staff, then presents it to the committee. The committee has a back and forth. That staff goes back, reworks it a little bit. It eventually ends up here in our Capital Improvements Plan. And it's a summary. It's meant to be a summary at this point because there's a lot of work that has gone into that. And if anybody is shocked and appalled at, you know, we're doing this in 14 minutes, I invite you to spend the 20-plus hours a week that I spend on some of this stuff or that my colleagues up here spend on some of this stuff in addition to our regular jobs. It's a lot of work. And I'm not complaining about it because I signed up for this. And I think it's kind of fun to sit up here and figure out, okay, this is the vision that we're trying to enact. We're your representatives to do that. But, you know, out here at a council meeting, this is presented as a summary. It's intended to be a summary. There's a lot of work that goes into it. There's a lot of information that is available if you have some questions about it. And I'm happy to talk to anybody about the process and about the work that has gone into it at any time. Thank you. I intend to support it.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, take it to a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's like it's seven zero. Thank you very much. All right, so we have made a decision to skip over the rest of the items in the agenda. So this concludes our meeting for this evening. The next, next meeting date will be on October 3, 2024. It will be a city council study session. Please remember to pick up after yourself on your way out. And Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, would you like to make a motion? Do I have a second? I think I, Councilmember Mahoney got that one. So, was that, oh. Okay, did you, all in favor, raise your right hand. All, seven zero, thank you.